Good morning, Chair.
Morning, Janey.
It will be a moment of silence today.
Thank you. Yes, we did have assigned Pastor Phyllis Murray.
Yes.
The Perump United Methodist Church. She's not present, is that right?
No, Chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll take a three-minute minute of silence, please. A moment of silence.
Hold on, please. If you'd like to join us and stand, please, here in the Perump. Thank you. Chair.
Yes, B.C.
Thank you. We're ready to start this meeting, sir.
Thank you. It's 10:02 a.m., April 4th, 2023. Going to open up the joint meeting of the Nye County Board of Commissioners, Nye County Board of Highway Commissioners, Nye County Licensing and Liquor Board, Nye County Board of Health, it's the governing body of the unincorporated town of Perump, it's the governing body of the unincorporated towns of Beatty, Gabbs, and Manhattan, and as the Board of Trustees for the Perump Pool District. Commissioner Boskovic, would you lead us in the pledge, please, and turn your microphone on?
All right, it's on. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to number two, public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Item number two is general public comment. Up to three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on an agenda as an action item.
I have someone here in Tonopah that I will start with. Go ahead, Miss Allen. Thank you.
Misha Allen, UNR Extension, and I'm just here with a update for March. It's been a really busy month for us. We had both Ram, the Ram Clinic here in Tonopah, and the Career Fair. So at the beginning of March, with your generous support through the ARPA funding, Extension did help to bring the, to partner with NCC to bring the clinic here to Tonopah for the first time. Pretty big deal. It was super successful. We totally knocked it out of the park. I was a little concerned. We only had two and a half months, really, to pull that off. We did an amazing job, if I may say so myself. Really impressed. We surpassed my expectations on the first day of service. But I know NCC is here to do a presentation, so I'll let them give all of the anecdotes and details. But definitely, I hope that we're able to get this again. And then at the end of March, we had our Career Fair, and that was a partnership between Extension and Tonopah Schools. And this is, we get to say it's an annual event now because it was our second time conducting this event. We, this is the feel-good event of the year. I love working with the teens. We had 136 professional participants in this event, up from 78 last year. And folks were able to represent their careers and pathways and inspire the kids on new possibilities for their life. It was an absolutely smashing success. Really, really enjoyed this event. I appreciate having Commissioner Jabour there and all the participation that was helping us to develop possibilities for the kids. We collectively served 194 students. And this year, it expanded from Tonopah Middle School and High School students to serving Esmeralda Middle School and Round Mountain High Schools. They bust their kids in for the event. And I need to give a special shout-out to Anna Whiteside, who's here today. She's officially our admin assistant, but unofficially, she's superhero cap worthy. She has some ridiculous organization skills that makes this event successful. I couldn't do it without Anna. Her efforts begin in November and just kind of go full throttle through to the event. And she is here with her husband, Mike, who I'd like to acknowledge as well as the rest of her family for their volunteer efforts and contributions to our programs throughout the year. They lift things, move things, offer to pitch in with snow removal, cut and glue materials. I really appreciate all that they do for our community programs. And speaking of family volunteers, I'd also like to acknowledge my daughter, Priya, who's here. She's instrumental in all of our game nights, day camps, the Ram Clinic, and Career Fair. She processes surveys and statistical data, too. And Priya, we want you to know that you're very helpful and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Appreciate that. Appreciate all the kudos and all that you did and do. Go ahead, Ms. Lane in Perump, please.
I'm Priscilla Lane. I'm Friends of the Wild with Horses and Burrows. We want to thank Rosemary Tangren and Judy Moyer and everyone who's supported us with petitions and the donations at the Desert Green Clubhouse Craft Event. We also want to thank also Anthony Greco for advising advertising our meetings and the SB 90 bill, which is our very important bill that's coming up this month. I also want to acknowledge our Commissioners that's supporting our group and our projects. The Nevada Legislature has a bill, SB 90, to make our Mustang the state horse. Go to the Nevada Legislature, SB 90, and sign and comment. We are at 61% approval. We have till April 14th. And to remind everyone, please, and I say again, please, don't try to feed or pet the horses in Burrows. Should you get hurt, the horses in Burrows are the ones who lose their livelihood, and the BLM will take them away. Our next meeting will be scheduled April 29th, 11 a.m. at the Desert Green Clubhouse off of Wilson. Please come and join us and give us your ideas in how we can stop the helicopter roundups and save what Burrows and horses we have left. We have already sent in over almost 54,000 signatures to our representatives to help stop the legislature. We are working with Lady Freethinker and other organizations to stop this roundups. We are working with them as close as we can, and we also want to remind you, please come to our meetings April 29th, 11 o'clock, at the Desert Green Clubhouse. I thank you again, and Commissioners, I thank you too for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. And before you step away from the podium, just for the record, could you spell your last name, please?
L.A.N.E.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Darica Gerling here in Beatty, in case you have any questions for us. Hope you have a great meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Gerling. Go ahead, Mr. Lackey in Perump, please.
Darrell Lackey, L.A.C.K.E.Y. Yeah, I missed a couple of meetings, you may have noticed. I've been helping my friends in California. He's had some trouble with rental property. Actually, I lived in that property before. And while I was there, I go to visit some of my friends in Newberry Park. And when I'm kind of a wise guy, he says, "So, Darrell, what's it like living in the most corrupt county in our country?" And this guy, he gets most of his information from TV. How do I explain to him that somehow the Republican Party is in control of all the positions in our county? How do I explain to him that there's other influences that are, instead of being a concern for the people, for themselves, you know, the people that make the decisions here? How do I explain the corruption that I know of, I mean, to someone that watches TV, you know? So it's a little discouraging, you know, a little, but it's good because it helps me get my skills better, you know, on communicating. The communication skills are important, I suppose, even if you're communicating to deaf ears. So, you know, it's all practice. The more you do something, the better you get at it, you know? I rewired his house. I did half of it in one day. I replumbed it in two days by myself. It's all a matter of deciding to do something and moving forward with it. Most people are afraid to take on stuff. They don't see the end, you know? I don't have to see the end of the staircase to start with the steps. But the end of the staircase can be a beautiful place, you know, for people without greed and selfishness and self-serving and self-righteous. And it's a shame that we can't get ministers to come in here on a regular basis. I guess it's really hard. You can't get the public to come in here because it's so discouraging. It's so dismal and so repulsive sometimes, you know, to come in here and see the people that are not serving the people so much, but serving themselves. Well, I'll talk to you again soon.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
James Medici, M.E.D.I.C.I. This is an open letter to the community dated April 1st from IAFF Local 4068 regarding our third letter and update to our support to Perump community. Local 4068 firefighters would like to inform you that on March 29th, 2023, Nevada State EMS conducted an ambulance inspection at the Perump Valley Fire Rescue. Only one of the four frontline ambulances was inspected due to a time crunch. The ambulance inspected was found to have significant violations, including two but not in lift net number two. Outdated EMS equipment practices and protocols, medications not properly stored due to lack of refrigeration, and certain licenses not up to date. These violations fall under the responsibility and the direction of Fire Chief Scott Lewis since Perump Valley Fire Rescue does not have a training captain or EMS coordinator and has an absent medical director. These violations were deemed severe enough to consider shutting down the ambulance and taking it out of service. We would like to thank the Nevada State EMS Program Manager for coming down to Fire Station 1 and encouraged her to come back again to inspect the remaining three frontline ambulances and frequently-used reserve ambulances. We believe the remaining frontline ambulances will have similar violations, and the reserve ambulances will be entirely noncompliant with Nevada State EMS regulations. Local 4068 firefighters are hoping the ambulance inspection is an eye-opener for Fire Chief Scott Lewis to correct these violations and bring the ambulances up to the appropriate standard. We encourage Fire Chief Scott Lewis to make the inspection report public and even present it to the Perump Town Board, county management, and the Nye County Board of Commissioners at the next BLCC meeting. If this document or letter becomes available, local 4068 firefighters intend to share the inspection report findings on our social media platforms and maintain transparency with the Perump community. The ambulance issues are just one of the many items cited on our 56 Concerns of Health, Safety, and Mismanagement found in the second boat of no confidence in our Fire Chief Scott Lewis. Under the management and direction of Fire Chief Scott Lewis, the town has contracted the same EMS director for well over a decade. The large majority of our firefighters have never seen or even been trained by him in the station. Fire Chief Scott Lewis appears to be keeping our medical director in the dark. Local 4068 firefighters presume no medical director would allow things to become so dire within the EMS agency regarding outdated EMS equipment practice protocols from 2014, medications not properly stored due to lack of refrigeration, running out of medications for months at a time without a back-up plan, and certain licenses not up to date, and preceptors not properly trained. The ambulance fleet remains in disrepair and units are frequently taken out of service for maintenance. A few of our ambulances have over 300,000 miles on them, leak fluid cracks running through the walls and doors that get jammed or stuck. Perump Valley Fire Fighters Rescue's Ambulance Fleet requires immediate attention, and Fire Chief Scott Lewis constantly saying that they're on backwater for years of time. It's unacceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Medici.
... regularly.
Thank you, Mr. Medici.
For the end.
Go ahead, Ms. Southworth in Perump.
Good morning. Diane Southworth, S.O.U.T.H.W.O.R.T.H. First off, I want to say, I want to say thank you to Congressman Horford for the million and a half dollars that they got to the hospital district. I didn't know this until I heard it in a meeting, and I think that's wonderful that they were able to help Tonopah in that way. I also would like to mention that today has been 55 years since Martin Luther King was assassinated, a man who all he wanted was equality and a good life for people and a fair justice system. I am very concerned about many of the states in this country that are trying to take away rights from people, banning books. The state of Missouri defunded their libraries. Of all things, can you imagine? I just, it's beyond belief. They're putting in rules to make it harder for people to vote, legal voters, to vote. They're putting in rules that take away polling places from colleges because they know that it'll make it harder for the college students to vote. They're doing this. On top of this, they're trying to turn women into second-class citizens. There are many of them that are trying to, one state wants to have the police be able to monitor menstrual cycles. Come on, get real here. I wonder what they would think with the state of Texas going after the abortion pill if they realized that two drugs that were worse for people than the abortion pill were Tylenol and Viagra. I wonder how men would feel if somebody told them they could no longer get Viagra. I wonder how they would feel if they had some of their rights taken away. We are a country that needs to be united. It does not need to be divided. I love my country. I want it to be better. And I think it can be better. But we've got to get away from the extremism of both sides and come in the middle and come up with solutions. I hope that we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Minshall in Perump, please.
Ms. Minshall, M.I.N.S.H.A.L.L. At the last meeting, Google was shelved. Hopefully, that means you want to get more information. Will they update us in Amargosa? Four years ago, we were basically forced to change from the county. Said, "Do it now, and we will pay for it. Wait, and it will cost you thousands of dollars if you do it yourself." I don't know if GPS was even considered at that time. My house, according to GPS, is about a mile away from where I live. Three or four minutes can mean the difference between life and death. Three or four minutes. There's a house where GPS takes you to that is not my house. So if they go to that house trying to find me, it could be five minutes or more. Amy Nelson was very opposed to GPS, but does she realize that if there were a fire at her house, if she needed medical assistance, GPS would take them right to her door? Maybe we need to go back to our old addresses. Again, a four- or five-minute delay could mean the difference between life and death to every single person in Amargosa. We really need to do something about this and rethink it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Anybody here in Tonopah wishing to speak? Public comment. Hey, hearing no public comment in Tonopah, Perump, and on the phone, I will close public comment and move on to number three, please, manager.
Item three, Commissioner Manager's comments. This item limited to announcements or topics and issues proposed for future workshops and agendas.
Thank you. Commissioner Boskovic?
I have nothing other than to thank everybody again for being here and being part of this, whether it's online or here with all of us or in Tonopah.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Nothing, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Carbone?
I was going to talk to GPS, but think I'll leave it alone, seeing as we've already put it on the agenda. We already approved the method to go forward. So hopefully, things will get strained out. If not, we need to figure out what to do. I think Pat's got a good point.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I also would like to welcome and thank everybody that's online and here in Tonopah and Perump as well, and in Beatty for joining us today. Manager comments?
I have Chief coming forward. Stand by.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Lewis, Fire Chief. A previous speaker on the telephone had made mention of a state inspection that was conducted last Wednesday. That inspection did, in fact, occur. It was an unscheduled, unannounced inspection that was completed while I was out of town in a training class, the results of which is that the ambulance passed with no issues. There was several recommendations. Those forms which were completed by the state representative who conducted the inspection were immediately provided to the county manager, and the entire format was actually forwarded to him as well as materials of exchange between myself and our medical director. Dr. Slaughter has done a great job for us over the last decade. He's always been there for us. We speak on a regular basis, and he's fully aware of all the circumstances that were discussed during the course of that content. If there are any questions, I have the materials available. They are, again, were provided to the county manager for his input and also for his forwarding to the board if necessary. There is absolutely the complete transparency in everything that we do, and I welcome any questions or concerns that anyone may have. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chief. I have a question for you, please.
Yes, sir.
On the inspection reports, they were signed off by Inspector. Who's the inspector, please?
It was the health, it was the medical, the manager, Bobby Sullivan.
Does Bobby Sullivan work for Nye County?
No.
Who does he work for, please, Chief?
It's actually she, and she works for the state.
She? I'm sorry?
She works for the state under Health and Human Services, and under the EMS Division specifically. She is the program manager.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. And I apologize if Bobby is on the phone referring to Bobby as a he. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Assistant County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to introduce to the board and everybody present our new risk manager for Nye County, Jake Skinner. He is there in Perump, walking up to the podium right now. He wants to say a few words.
Jake Skinner, J.A.K.E.S.K.I.N.N.E.R. I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to joining the management team and carrying out the will of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. Welcome aboard, Mr. Skinner. Any other manager comments?
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, manager.
So I did want to confirm what Fire Chief Scott Lewis said, that he did provide the inspection report on that ambulance to me on Saturday. I asked him to provide a hard copy. He just sent me text images via phone. And so I do have a copy of that report. I was out of the office yesterday, but it's sitting on my desk, ready for distribution for the Commissioners or anybody else who wants to see it. And second, I wanted to point out that we have in our midst a published author in the form of Assistant Manager Lorena Dillinger. So I wanted to announce this during the last meeting, but it wasn't here. But there's a book that NACO published called Governing on the Ground, which shares stories from county leaders, and she submitted an article for that which was published. And so we do have copies, limited copies of this available in the county. And I asked Lorena to sign mine, and she did so this morning. So just wanted to let everybody know that that is available for everyone.
Thank you. I appreciate that, manager, and congratulations, Assistant County Manager Dillinger. Please put one aside for me with autographed, and I'll ask Commissioner Carbone to buy it for me.
You're more than welcome, Chair.
All the funding goes to the airports.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any other manager comments? Okay, let's close the manager, Commissioner Manager comments, and move on to number four, please.
And for approval of the agenda for today's meeting, the only items for removal today are item number five, emergency items on page one, and then on page three, item 26. And those are the only items for removal today. Again, item number five on page one and item 26 on page three.
Thank you. Thank you. Number six, please.
Item six, 10 a.m. timed item, presentation of certificates and/or plaques to two employees honored for their years of service.
So we have 15 years honoring Michael Whiteside, 15 years with Public Works. Congratulations and thank you. I think Anna has something to do with it. Thank you again. And we have honoring Corey Ebling, 20 years of service, and she's with the Treasurer's Office.
Oh, could you squeeze through there?
Number seven, please, manager.
Item seven, 10:00 AM timed item, presentation by DJ Mills and Ryan Muccio with the Nye Communities Coalition regarding program status, outcome results, a budget status report, and future goals pursuant to Nye County ARPA Recovery Plan and Policy, Public Health Assistance, Mental Health.
Good morning. Jessica McCutcheon, MCCUTCHEON, Grants Administrator for Nye County. When we have an entity receive money for ARPA funding and they are a, they receive public assistance, I apologize, funding, we ask them to give a quarterly programmatic report. And so this is what you are going to hear today from Ryan and DJ for Nye CC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Please spell your names for the record and then go on with your presentation, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Ryan Muccio, M.U.C.C.I.O. First, I believe Jessica is celebrating a year in her new position. So I wanted to say congratulations. She's doing great. So again, my name is Ryan Muccio. I'm the president-elect for the Nye Communities Coalition Board of Directors and I was the co-chair for the Tonopah RAM Clinic. I want to thank you for the opportunity this morning to report back on our ARPA funding for the remote area medical clinics. I am happy to report that as a direct result of receiving the ARPA funds, we were able to complete a successful remote area medical clinic for the first time in Tonopah in early March. The clinic exceeded our goals and we were able to help 179 individuals who received $72,698 in care over the two days. As we were planning, we thought maybe we'd see 50 to 75. We beat that halfway through the first day, so. The overall consensus from remote area medical staff from Tennessee and the local volunteers was that the need for Tonopah, that the need in Tonopah for healthcare services is immense, but that's nothing that we didn't know. This clinic was able to fill that gap. I wanted to highlight a story of a lady, Judy, who lives in Tonopah, who came to receive dental services. She was so impressed with the work that she had done, that she spent the rest of the day going to people's houses all throughout Tonopah, encouraging them to come to the clinic and shuttling them back and forth. Our last count was she brought about 15 people to the clinic. So that was incredible. The community of Tonopah was very receptive and hospitable. The local businesses quickly adjusted and adapted to serve the large influx of volunteers and went out of their way to make sure everyone knew how important and appreciated the clinic was to the town. In addition to the financial support, I'd like to thank the various county departments who contributed to the success of the clinic as well. From the road department helping clear snow to the county health nurse, EMS, the sheriff's office was fantastic, and also Fire Chief Scott Lewis with emergency management. It was a true story of a community coming together to care for each other and we are grateful for the opportunity to facilitate this event. We are looking forward to working with the community of Tonopah to help facilitate the formation of a committee of local community members who hope to come together and plan another clinic for 2024. Without ARPA funding, of course, there will be a considerable amount of fundraising effort required to make that happen, but with enough time and passion, we feel that they can make that happen. Briefly, I am also happy to report that planning is well underway for the 2023 Eighth Annual Perump RAM Clinic, which will be held on October 7th and 8th. I look forward to coming back to this board to report on the successes from that clinic as well as the funding was additionally for Perump. I also want to mention, we were remiss in mentioning the great help from the YACC, I hope I said that correctly, group in Tonopah. The youth and their leader, Deborah, were amazing and a huge, huge help with setup and teardown. And unfortunately, they got missed in some of our thank yous. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge them. If you have any questions regarding the programmatic reporting that was submitted, I'd be happy to answer those at this time.
Any commissioners have any questions?
Not I, sir.
None for me.
Okay. Did we, did we have an additional speaker?
Yes.
Standing at the podium? Did you wish to, please?
Yes, absolutely. My name's DJ Mills. That's M.I.L.L.S. I'm with Nye Communities Coalition. I'm here today to report on the recent ARPA funding that our organization received to fund programs to help community members reentering from the Nye County Detention Centers, to build collaborations, to support an assertive community treatment team, and to help local individuals access their social security disability benefits. So far, we've successfully assigned our existing staff to the specific positions, which has enabled us to provide enhanced services to individuals in our community. Our SOAR benefit specialist has screened six clients, onboarded five of them, referred one of them to legal services, and initiated the application process for three of those onboarded clients. Our reentry case manager has provided case management services to 25 clients, created four case plans, and made 32 referrals to partner agencies to connect clients with additional resources. These efforts have significantly contributed to improving the stability and well-being of individuals living with serious mental illness in our community. These programs have been an asset to our community. Our team has had the opportunity to serve some of the more complex clients. We've been working on identifying appropriate resources, the resource gaps, collaborating with outside agencies, and overcoming barriers towards accessing services and treatments. Clients connect with us for a variety of reasons, ranging from financial needs, housing, employment, behavioral health, medical health, identification, transportation, and so on. Many of our most complex clients will need assistance on some level with several or even all of these needs at the same time. These funds received by ARPA have supported our efforts to collaboratively provide wraparound case management services in a way that would be very difficult for any single agency. So with that, I want to speak to a couple of successes that we've had in these recent few months. We had a client referred to us by a local medical office and simultaneously referred by another social services agency. Unfortunately, this client had been recently incarcerated due to issues related to their medication noncompliance. And as a result, their living situation was in complete disarray. They didn't have any utilities, no income, and they were at risk of losing their home. It was a tough situation, but our team was able to work together and step in and help. So over the past few months, we've been able to assist this client in receiving utility assistance, social security benefits that they were entitled to from a lifetime of work. They also have received identification documentation, now have active medical benefits. We were able to connect them with medical and mental health services as well. And as at this moment, that individual is in their home and has a level of stability that would not have been possible without this funding. Another success story that we've had is a client that was connected to us from a community health worker here in our community. And this client was, had recently become homeless and had mental health needs and had not been connected with social services. With this funding, we were able to help the client with transportation to obtain their Medicaid card and their SNAP benefits. We were able to help this client with scheduling appointments for mental health. They were able to attain a cell phone so that we can keep in communication and remind them of their appointments. And then we were even able to help them find a housing unit to be in that they could afford with their existing benefits. Since then, we've been able to help the client make that first appointment with their mental health, pick up their medication, and even assist in transferring their social security to their new address. So it's been awesome and I would just want to thank everybody here. And if you guys have any questions, let's hear them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mills, please?
No. Just kudos. We've got to commend you on taking action that is sorely needed and we're happy that we were able to participate.
Thank you so much.
And I want to thank you guys for the answers to your questions that you were asked in here are so thorough and, I mean, they're just awesome compared to another.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'd like to thank DJ Mills and Ryan Muccio for everything that you do through the coalition. We all appreciate all of your efforts. Don't go too far away.
And Jessica.
And Jessica as well. Well, Jessica's not with Nye County Coalition.
You're absolutely right.
She's with Nye County.
We know that. Thank you.
Yes. We acknowledge Jessica in a different way, different time, but thank you for reminding me. Yes. So let's close number seven and go to number 25, please.
25 for possible action, presentation, discussion, and deliberation to approve, amend, and approve or reject the program funding requests from Nye Communities Coalition under the Nye County ARPA Recovery Plan and Policy, Public Health Assistance, Mental Health Initiatives in the amount of $81,096.91.
Good morning again. Jessica McCutcheon, MCCUTCHEON, Grants Administrator for Nye County. I would like to introduce again Ryan from Nye CC. He is requesting funding from ARPA and this will qualify under the mental health, which there is. I apologize. $212,753 remaining. And I can update that after this presentation if need be.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, again.
Go ahead, Mr. Muccio.
Yes, sir. This is Ryan Muccio, M.U.C.C.I.O. Long time no talk. Thank you for your time this morning and your consideration of this item. I wanted to provide a quick backstory on how this proposal came about. Each month, partners of the Nye Communities Coalition and members of our community come together to what's called the General Coalition Meeting at the library. That meeting focuses on identifying community needs as well as identifying existing potential resources to help solve some of these needs. Last month, we received a CPR and AED training as part of that meeting, which was very beneficial. Afterwards, during open discussion, it was brought up by a local youth golf coach that she would really like an AED for her when they are on the course and also traveling for competition. And she's tried in the past to get this through various grants or fundraisers, but the cost is just too prohibitive. And so, you know, the cost for these machines is very high. The groups used to provide ones for free, but now they've stopped doing that. It was determined that the need is substantial and extends not just to youth sports teams, but also to local clubs and organizations throughout the county. To solve that need, we're proposing putting together 50 kits that will contain an AED kit, an advanced first aid kit, as well as a mental health first aid kit and other resources, including Narcan for drug overdose. The kit will be combined with an AED and CPR and first aid training for many individuals who would be carrying these kits. And especially with the recent events that many of us are probably familiar with, with Damar Hamlin, that AED saved his life. So the accessibility is huge. And so the need for AEDs accessible to properly trained bystanders have highlighted, has been highlighted and gained a great deal of attention and focus. We're hoping to make Nye County one of the most prepared and trained counties in this regard. And with this funding, we can do that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Muccio. Are there any questions from the commissioners in Perump, please?
No, sir.
Nothing, Chair?
No.
If not, we have no other comments. Maybe we get some public comment and then we can make a motion.
Yes. We'll open it up to public comment at this time. Soon as the camera moves, I'll see if there's anybody.
We've got someone here.
Is there anybody, anybody here in Tonopah wishing to speak on this? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Southworth.
Diane Southworth, S.O.U.T.H.W.R.I.T.H. I think it's just so important that we help the kids in this community and elsewhere, and I'm all for it and I hope you get it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
No. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I'll close public comment at this time. And I'm looking for a motion, please.
Motion to approve is ready.
Second.
There you go.
Okay. Any further discussion from the commission? Hearing done, I will call for the vote at this time.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Tabor's aye.
Carbone's aye.
25 passes, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you, commissioners. I had a quick question. Am I able to clarify something I spoke on the last item or is that out of turn? Out of turn? Okay, thank you.
Well, don't walk away yet. Manager Sutton, let's, it must be important for him to come back and want to give clarification. Let's, we're, number 25 is closed at this time. Let's reopen number seven, please.
Item seven, 10:00 AM timed item, presentation by DJ Mills and Ryan Muccio with Nye Communities Coalition regarding program status, outcome results, a budget status report, and future goals pursuant to the Nye County ARPA Recovery Plan and Policy, Public Health Assistance, Mental Health.
Thank you, commissioners and county manager. I just wanted to clarify, I believe I misspoke. A youth group here in Perump that we facilitate is YACC. The youth group in Tonopah that was especially helpful is CYAC. So, or CYCC, so sorry. All these acronyms are just floating all around my head. But I wanted them to get the proper acknowledgement. So I really appreciate you reopening that item for clarification. Thank you.
So if you don't mind, sir, before you leave, because it's an acronym and you had to give clarification and we have people sitting in Perump and in Tonopah, if you don't mind spelling it out, please. Not literally either.
I would love to and I will take a stab at it. I believe Misha Allen, who is there in Tonopah with you, could definitely give it to us, but I believe it's the community youth. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to misspeak. I'm sorry. I misspoke once already. But Misha Allen there in Tonopah can give us the proper spelling of that.
Ms. Allen, please, could you come to the podium if you don't mind?
Misha Allen, A-L-E-N, U.N.R. extension. Yeah, it's C.Y.A.C. And the adult advisor is Deb Cobb.
And what does it stand for, please?
I don't know, actually. I think it's the Community Action.
Community Youth.
Community Youth Action Committee?
I believe that to be correct as well, now that she said it.
I can't.
Mr. Chair? I think it's Community Youth Advisory Council.
No.
That's exactly what we need, more acronyms, right?
I owe Mr. Sutton lunch.
Thank you. And the second one? And the second one, please?
I don't believe there, oh, the second one was the one that's down here in Perump. They did not contribute to the Tonopah clinic.
But that's okay. You gave an acronym, please. Okay, you can get back to us, Mr. Muccio, with that.
I will. I apologize. Thank you.
That way, everybody knows what you're referring to, when you're referring to it, and what it's for, et cetera. They know that you're doing a good job, especially for the youth. Thank you again.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. We're going to close number seven at this time. And go to number eight, please.
Item eight, 10:00 AM timed item, presentation by Sharon Black with the Cotillion for Success Program regarding program status, outcome results, a budget status report, and future goals pursuant to the Nye County COVID Relief Program and Policy, Public Assistance.
Good morning again. Jessica McCutcheon, MCCUTCHEON, Grants Administrator for Nye County. I don't believe that Sharon Black is here today to present. That's okay. I do want to give a timeline of events since the funds were awarded back in October. to give a timeline of events since the funds were awarded back in October of twenty-one. When we have started giving COVID relief funding to entities, we did ask for programmatic reporting once a quarter. This would have been the first time that we actually heard from her. On ten.
Excuse me, Ms., excuse me, Ms. McCutcheon.
Yes.
Excuse me, please. I apologize for the interruption. It's very important that the Commission supported the Cotillion for Success.
Yes, sir.
County monies was awarded, and it's very important, and I find it very necessary to get Ms. Black on the phone if she's not available in person. So, there are people in Tonopah, people in Perump, people on the phone. There, we have a lot of questions for Ms. Black. So, is there any way we can get her on the phone?
We can definitely attempt. We had reached out, and there have been numerous emails and phone calls alerting her to this date. But we can definitely attempt to call her as well.
If you don't mind, Ms. McCutcheon, this is very important. I don't want you to give the timeline, and then you have to answer questions when we turn this over to Ms. Black and a couple of others that are, I know they're in the audience, but we want to hear from Ms. Black.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for your patience. We could either close and move on, see if we can get her on the line. Okay, let's close number eight, please.
Just wanted to clarify. So, Jessica, are you calling her? I have her number, too, if you.
Whichever works easiest. I don't have her number on me. I can get it, but if you have it, then we can use that.
Number eight is closed. Let's move on to number nine, please.
Item nine, for possible action, discussion, and deliberation regarding the general road report by the Public Works Director on General Road Maintenance, Gravel Road Maintenance, Asphalt Patching, Weed, Mowing, and Direction Regarding Public Works Projects.
Oh, yes, sitting as the Knight County Board of Highway Commissions. Director, what's your day like today? I don't see your hands. Don't look like they have asphalt or anything on them. So, I know you haven't been repairing any roads, so what's going on?
Good morning, Commissioners. My morning consisted of a beautiful drive in the sun until I got to Tonopah, where it is blowing snow. So, yeah. That's my morning so far. Well, not anymore. It was when I got here.
It's no snow.
At about five forty, it was snowing in Goldfield, but probably not snowing anymore.
No. It was sunny in Goldfield when I went here.
There you go.
All right, let's start with maintenance in the north. Went from snow to floods. So, now we have lots and lots of flood repair, lots and lots of things going on with that, mostly in the outlying areas, not so much in Tonopah area.
So, is there any specific damage or anything that we're, we need to be accounting for or anything like that?
Nothing that is above any threshold that we can do anything about, but most of it's just stuff that we're going to have to take care of. We're working on what we can. We've gotten three or four grader stuck up in the higher elevations because the mud is so thick that, you know, we go out there, try to clear it, clear the snow, that kind of stuff, and we just end up getting the grader stuck. So, we're going to hold off on the higher elevations for a little bit and try to let them dry out some.
Is it causing any kind of, any kind of problems for the people living up there?
It is, and that's the reason why we're trying to get there. But if we can't get there, then, you know, what are we supposed to do? If we try to get up there in a grader, which is what's supposed to be clearing this stuff, and the grader gets stuck, and then we can't get to the grader to get it unstuck, I mean, it's, I mean, you know, we're trying everything we can. Unfortunately, it's just that kind of a situation.
So, again, we'll talk a little bit later, but I want to make sure those, if there's people up there and they're bound in and they can't get out, we need to figure out and get something to them.
Right, right. And that's what we're trying to do. In the central district, we're doing our tour, doing gravel road maintenance, puddle patching, and tree maintenance as needed as requested online. We're concentrating on Spring Meadows Road to get it complete before the busy summer season, where people go down to Ash Meadows and stuff like that. After that, we'll start the street pad, the street prep on Farm Road for the skin patch, the cold mix overlay that we're going to do at the end of Farm Road. The temperatures next week are going to be awesome. Unfortunately, we don't have the material for it, but we'll, hopefully, we'll get it out there before next winter. No, we'll have it out there by the end of the month, and we'll have that done by the end of the month. So, yeah, we should, without any problem. In the south, just gravel road maintenance, ditch and covert repair and maintenance, tree trimming, puddle patching as needed. We have estimated, we estimated, we have filled more than a thousand potholes in the month of March. And it doesn't look like we've done anything. And we discussed this last month, what's happening in Perump.
I noticed this more.
And it's everywhere. It's in Crystal. I mean, it's all in this other district. So, it's not just in one place. So, and so, we're doing everything we can. We have people doing it on overtime sometimes. Sometimes we have two crews doing it on overtime just to try to catch up. We add a little bit of extra leeway in our labor budget, so we're going to spend that. It's been a little overtime and try to get caught up on the potholes. But they're getting, they're, they're being made faster than we can fix them. So.
Just tells you the condition of our roads.
Right, right. And then, after that, we're going to start doing the prep for the chip seal season. And we're going to concentrate on the overlay roads first, and then work on the grind up and re-chip roads after that. Projects. Basin and Blag, we finished the intersection two weeks early. Finished it last Friday. The last couple of days, we've been doing a little bit of ditch work in order to make sure that the water flows through the ditches and under, and through the culverts that we installed in order to not flood out the intersection if we were to get another rainstorm. Other than that, we should finish that today, and then we'll start working on the main line. We'll start excavating.
When will that road be open, or is it open now?
It's open now. It was open on Saturday night. At eight o'clock Saturday night, they opened it back up.
Yeah, I've been staying away from that area, just, just for that reason. Okay, cool.
And I sent an email out or a text message out to EMS and the sheriff so that they understood that it was open, and they're, they could go through that intersection without any problems. So, PVB North, we finally were able to stripe it with our striper. We've got it working. Still haven't, we're still waiting on the training, right, as of right now. They're supposed to be here on Monday. But I think that the training is more pressures and stuff, that kind of stuff, the technical workings of it than it was the using of it. And so, our striping guru, that's what we call him, the guy that does all the striping and has for years, was able to figure out how to get it to work, and we got it to work. So, we striped PVB North. PVB South, we have not striped yet because we're still waiting for certain things. Hopefully, in the next week or two, we're able to get it striped.
Okay. I don't have a crystal ball. What's those certain things you're talking about?
I'm not at liberty to talk about them right now. So, we can talk offline if you want to. Okay. Paving projects. Paving projects are still on track for the middle of April. That's Fox Dunes and Linda Street at the highway. We're working on getting a plan together to fix Murphy and get that chip sealed. I know we've had a lot of comments about that one, so we're going to get that taken care of. And that's all I have for projects. So, I'll turn it back over to you guys.
Fantastic, fantastic. Commissioners, do we have any, anything you want to talk? Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I've seen a lot of those potholes that they've been filling. But there's areas where you're feeling like two dozen, three dozen potholes in an area, and then when they set in, they get all clumpy, and they turn into bumps instead of smooth areas. Is there some reason why you can't bring a roller out when you're doing these kind of areas and roll those flat when they're being put in? Because it may be inconvenient, but it's really inconvenient when you try to drive over those, and your front end of your automobile's bouncing all around. So, it just looks really sloppy. It looks like some people that are doing this don't care. They're just filling them, and they, I'd appreciate it if you could do something about it to smooth those out. Thank you.
Will do. Is it feasible to do that, or is it something that you, you know, some of these chip seal roads, as soon as you start hitting with that roller?
Yeah.
You'll have more.
The chip seal roads is harder because with the cold weather, that kind of stuff, it will disintegrate the chip seal on the road, and it'll make it worse. The paved areas, we could definitely do that with.
That I understand, you know, the asphalt areas, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Mr. Strickland?
I'm good, thank you. Thank you, Director.
Vice Chair Butovich?
I just wanted to thank them for what they're doing, and we all understand with all the rain how tough it is to stay up on these freaking potholes.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Jabor?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of things. I think you have it on your radar. McCullough here in Tonopah, McCullough and Florence going up the hill towards Miss Poway. I think, I think there's work order on that. And recently, I was in Perump. It's not a pothole. It's not a large pothole. It's not a series of potholes. But on Huckleberry and Zephyr, it's like a quarter of the road is taken out. Huckleberry and Zephyr. Do you know, you know where that is?
Try, Zephyr is the end of Cavada, right?
Uh, yes.
Yes, and then you turn right to get to Huckleberry.
Turn right, and you can turn right again on Huckleberry.
Yes.
Right there, it's, it's, it's a, the whole chunk of the road is gone.
Okay.
If you could take a look at that, please.
Yeah.
Other than that, I know you guys are working hard. I'm glad you didn't say you were still plowing up here in Tonopah because there's nothing to plow. It's all melted. And of course, we don't want your guys getting stuck, putting, putting themselves in a dangerous situation while they're blading or attempting to blade, because then that's costly, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So, I know we're working on certain stuff for, for trying to get these roads repaired as much as we can. But again, we have to remember that we have the very possibility of putting something on the ballot for a fuel tax, which is be diesel tax. Just hope everybody hears that and reminds themselves of that. Then we need to be prepared and make sure we have the ballot question on, on the ballot. So, it's not your responsibility, but it's your responsibility to make sure somebody's getting it done. So, just want to make sure of that. FEMA, where are we at with the FEMA activity? Drainage.
The drainage?
Yes.
I believe that we did get an NTP to the consultant for them to start processing the data.
Good. So, we should see something soon, then.
Well, it takes months to do that.
When I say soon, it's better than a year.
Yeah, right.
And how's the tower at the Beatty Airport?
Tower at the Beatty Airport, the beacon?
Yeah. Everything's good?
Everything's good, as far as I know.
Just want to check.
I haven't driven out there, by there at nighttime in a long time, so.
It's working. Just to let you know.
All right.
All right. I appreciate it. Any other questions from anybody else? If that, turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So, number nine is closed. We will go to number ten. However, if we can get the sheriff, I believe he's on the line, pinpoint.
Oh, you're right. We didn't do public comment. My mistake. Any public comment? Misha's got public comments. She probably has a road you need to fix. Just kidding.
Misha Allen, A-L-L-E-N, UNR extension. I'm just having some conversations with faculty in anticipating statewide flooding in, as a result of all of the melting of snow. I'm not sure how that's going to relate here, but if there's anything that I could do to contribute in an education capacity as far as preparing the public, I know that I'm available for that. It can be something as simple as being, as preparedness, or also things to help prevent infection in livestock. So, whatever types of problems you're anticipating, know that we are happy to be a part of that conversation.
Very good. Thank you, Misha. Does anybody on the phone, Sam?
No, Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment. Before I close public comment.
Frank?
Is that, do I see anybody down? Oh, we got our cameras are here, so I can see somebody.
Scott Lewis, Director, Scott Lewis, Director of Emergency Management, and also the Fire Chief Town of Perump. I want to thank Director Bowling for his assistance during the recent flooding events up in the Yamba in the Duckwater area. His expertise and also his crew's commitment over the weekends and at all hours was extraordinary. And number two, I want to thank him also for keeping us so well informed on the Basin Black project and even calling us on the weekend to make sure that we knew that it was open so we could get that emergency traffic flowing again. Thank you.
Hey, Chief, anybody else in Perump? Anybody else here in Tonopah?
No, sir.
Yamba's on the phone. Now, I'll close public comment.
Motion to approve as presented.
There's actually nothing to approve. I know, I know what it says. So, I thought we need to make a motion on this?
No.
DA?
Good morning, Chair. Michelle Nelson, for the record, no, there is no motion necessary.
Thank you. I withdraw that motion.
Thank, thank you. You're welcome. Over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I will reopen number ten if the sheriff is on the line.
I believe he is. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, this is Sheriff McGill, M-C-G-I-L-L. And item number ten is consideration of a gaming license for Best Bet Products.
Excuse me, Chair. Can we, Chair, let's have the manager read that item, please. Manager, go ahead.
Item ten, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve a gaming license for Best Bet Products Incorporated for a gaming slot route located at Chevron of Amargosa Valley, fifty-three seventeen East Highway ninety-five, Amargosa Valley, Nevada. Shawn Holmes and Louis Spasato applicants.
Okay, so this is for a slot route to maintain service and payout. The Chevron of Amargosa, Best Bet Products is a license holder for several other businesses around the county, and this is for them to be able to service this location. So, if there are any questions from the board?
I see none here in Perump, Chair?
Nothing from me, Chair.
No.
I, and I see nobody here, us two have any comments? I don't believe so. So, with that, can we get some public comment? Any public comment? I don't, any public comment on the phone?
No. Chair, we have.
There's no public comment here.
We have none here in Perump either. Sheriff McGill.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Tabor's seconds.
Okay, a motion and a second. Do we have a vote from the board?
Aye.
Aye.
Tabor's aye.
Tabor's aye.
Okay, five to nothing. And that passes.
Excuse me, Chair, it would be six.
Six, six, okay, six-zero.
Six to nothing, I'm sorry. He didn't vote?
You got to count yourself.
I vote aye. I vote aye, yes. So, that should, motion passes, that should close number ten.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Yep.
Sheriff, before you jump off the line, please, if you could hold on, and let me go to number twenty, and then I'll go to number twenty-one, seeing how you're on the line, sir.
Excellent, thank you.
Number twenty, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to issue a display fireworks event permit to the town of Round Mountain for an aerial display at their annual Fourth of July. to the town of Round Mountain for an aerial display at their annual Fourth of July event on Tuesday, July 4th, 2023. This event is being held in the Hadley subdivision in Round Mountain, Nevada. Nicole Silberschlag is the applicant.
Excuse me, you need to announce that you're standing as the, sitting as the Board of County Commissioners, Board of Commissioners on this? Because you were on the gaming.
We, we were on gaming, number 10 closed.
Okay.
It was turned back, Sheriff turned it back over to me.
Okay, thank you.
For the Board of County Commissioners. For the record. Okay. Do we have any public comment for number 20?
We see none here in.
Hearing and seeing, thank you, hearing and seeing no public comment. Do we have anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
No, thank you, before I close. Public comment. Motion to.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor in a second. Do I have any further discussion from the, from the commission?
Nothing, Chair, for me.
No.
Okay.
Carbone aye.
I will call for the vote. Carbone is aye, Jabor is aye.
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 Number 20 passes five, zero. Number 21, please, manager.
Item 21 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, approve, amend and approve or reject an interlocal agreement between Clark County and Nye County for coroner medical examiner services in the amount of $2,800 per autopsy and external examination services at $800 per exam. Two, fund from 10101 General. And three, execute the agreement.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve fund from 10101 General and execute the agreement.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion on the floor in a second. I will open this up for discussion.
Are you looking from the commissioner?
From the commission.
Okay, from the commission. Unfortunately, we see this is going to climb every year we bring this forward. So hopefully, everybody understands that we'll be seeing this change again. Probably a little bit more than it is today. But it's, we have no other, other recourse because we don't have this kind of facilities here in, in Nye County.
Well, Sheriff, are you still on the line, sir?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, thank you, sir.
Okay.
I know that you've been very active since you've taken your office. And perhaps we can, we can revisit offline and see what this actually entails. As Commissioner Carbone said, this will continue to grow and climb with this type of activity and see what we can do with, within Nye County where we have, we have our own facility, our, our own coroner. And perhaps other counties may come to us and ask us for assistance where they're paying, paying the county back, Nye County back for something like this. Is this, is this something that could work?
I, I will say that in the future, that is something that could be presented and could work. I will, the, I would say that more than likely, the cost would be pretty cost prohibitive because we would have to, have to provide a facility for this to be done. We would have to hire a medical examiner and pay those salaries and wages for their staff. Unfortunately, this is just one of those things that at this point in time that we have to deal with because any unattended deaths in the county have to have some consideration from, from a medical examiner. We oftentimes consult by phone with them as far as what the, the investigation on scene relates to and what the cause of death could be. However, anything that is remotely suspicious death or questionable, we do have to get an autopsy done by a medical examiner. And these, these are the costs that, that they charge us on, on our contract. This has been an ongoing thing for years and years in Nye County. And unfortunately, we just, like I said, we don't have a medical examiner on staff or, or that services the county. So this is the way we have to do it.
Thank you for that explanation, Sheriff. We certainly appreciate it. And I have Ms. Honey Strozi here in Tonopah wishing to speak.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Honey Strozi, S-T-R-O-Z-Z-I for the record. I would just like to say that the costs haven't increased in over a decade. So I'm anticipating possibly the same results, but I guess, you know, we can keep an eye on it if that's a concern.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It's, it's not a concern as much as, as an option. If it's cost prohibitive, as we heard the sheriff say, and that's why we went in this direction, that's pretty simple and understood, I get it. I wasn't here when we had a facility and when we had this type, this type of service for Nye County. So that's why we, we're obligated, all of the commissioners, we're obligated to be creative and try to save, save money to, in order to make money and reroute it in different areas to help, help the county as best we can.
Certainly, yes, I agree. And if you would like, in the future, we can always go out to bid for these services or, you know, RFQ, something of that nature. I know before 2013, we were using an independent contractor to provide these services, so.
Then we, then we cut it off and we went to this direction. I remember that vividly.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'm glad that more information is coming out and we're discussing it so the people know that we're at least looking into these different options. And we've already looked into it. And cost prohibitive is easily understood, so I get it. Okay, thank you. Let me open this up to public comment at this time.
No one here in Perump.
Thank you, anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
Okay, did you have public comment at this time? No, okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Perump and on the phone, I will close public comment. I do have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion from the commission, I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Carbone aye.
Aye. Aye.
Jabor is aye. Number 21 passes five, zero. If we can go to number 11, please, manager.
Item 11 for possible action, discussion and deliberation regarding Town of Perump Proclamation Number Pete 2023-01, a proclamation recognizing May 1st, 2023 as Perump Youth Law Awareness Day in the town of Perump.
Ms. Tackett, do we, did you want to open or do we have Kelly, Kelly O'Donnell?
Ms. O'Donnell said she was going to attend the meeting.
Yes.
In Perump.
Okay. I, I don't see her at the podium.
I don't either.
Oh, okay. Thank you for confirming that. Okay. How would you like to proceed at this time?
Well, I only assisted in getting the item to the agenda. I'm not sure that I could speak on it.
Okay.
Lorena, do you know anything about this particular one?
I, I don't, I'm sorry.
Let's, if you don't mind, let's take seven minute comfort break and see if we can get Kelly O'Donnell on the phone, if you don't mind. Is that okay? When we return, if she's not available, we'll have to postpone this and move it. We don't have to. Okay, sitting as the governing board of unincorporated town of Perump, I will reopen number 11. And I believe we have the presenter, Kelly O'Donnell, on the phone. And thank you all for your patience.
Thank you, Chair. And Kaylee, if you're on the line, please press star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, so, so what this is about, if you have or do you don't have your, your backup? They're asking us for a proclamation from, throughout the Nevada cities declaring a statewide youth law awareness day to help all Nevada communities empower their youth by helping them make informed and ideally lawful decisions as they return to something resembling normalcy. So we all know, we all went to school, we all had summer break, spring break, Christmas break, holiday break. And we all know that sometimes we can get ourselves into, in trouble and we're young and we're not thinking clearly and we're influenced by others. So, so this is where they put in here, ideally lawful, that they're making, making good decisions. And again, at the last meeting, I mentioned the acronym RISE. And this, this is where RISE comes in here on this proclamation as well. Standing for resiliency, inclusion, solvency, and most importantly, empowerment for these young, our youth to make good decisions. So unfortunately, we don't have the presenter on the phone. I hope that helped clear up some confusion because time is of the essence as it's due by May 1st for the proclamation. So I can open this up for public comment if there's any?
None here, Chair.
I know Sam's gonna tell me that Kelly's on the phone and that's fine. But let me open it up for public comment.
Chair, she's on the phone, but if I may clarify, please.
Yes.
It looks like the wrong proclamation is attached. It's actually supposed to be a Town of Perump proclamation. So since we don't have the petitioner and the correct backup for this item, I recommend we move it to a future meeting.
You recommend what, I'm sorry?
Moving it to a future agenda.
Motion to continue.
18. I have a motion to continue to April 18th, please, Commissioner.
18.
Still amended.
Second.
Thank you for clarifying that. I still have public comment that's open. Is there anybody on the phone for public comment?
No Chair.
Okay. Anybody in Perump, please, commissioners?
Nothing here.
And no, no public comment here in Tonopah, Perump and on the phone, I'll close public comment. I have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion.
Carbone aye.
Thank you, call for the vote.
Aye. Aye.
Jabor is aye. This passes five, zero to continue to April 18th, 2023. Sitting as the governing body of the unincorporated towns of Beatty, Gabbs, Manhattan, Railroad Valley, number 12, please.
Item 12 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, approve the purchase of a Continental brand washer extractor in the name of, in the amount of $11,000 from reliable commercial laundry equipment for the Beatty Volunteer Fire Department. And two, fund from 24235 Beatty Volunteer Fire Department Public Safety Sales Tax Fund.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Okay, thank you, commissioners. I will need to open this up for public comment if there's any. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Erica Gerling, G-E-R-L-I-N-G. And Chief Harmon couldn't be there today, but if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair. Chief is here, if you do have questions, he's making himself available, so you know, commissioners?
Thank, thank you. Like to open it up for the commission if they have any questions. Hearing and seeing no further discussion from the commission, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Carbone aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Jabor is aye. Number 12 passes five, zero.
And just one question, DA, you wouldn't have a problem with what we just did, correct?
Michelle Nelson for the record, Commissioner Carbone. The action is permitted under the Nye County Code, so that is fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy DA, Michelle Nelson. Appreciate that. Good to see you and hear your voice. Welcome back.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Sitting as the Board of County Commissioners, consent agenda items.
Next are your consent agenda items.
Second.
Okay, is there any public comment? I'll open it up for public comment on consent agenda items.
13 through 16.
13 through 16. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
I can't see Perump chambers if anybody's at the podium or not.
I'm sorry, no, no one, no one is here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, appreciate it. Hearing and seeing no public comment on consent agenda items. Perump, Tonopah on the phone, I will close public comment and call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Carbone aye.
Carboni, aye.
Aye.
Borzai.
Baskaraj.
Consent agenda items thirteen through sixteen passes five zero. Number seventeen, please.
Item seventeen for possible action, discussion and deliberation to place an agenda item on the Nye County Advisory Board to manage wildlife, to recommend to the Nevada Board of Wildlife Commissioners, the establishment of a sanctuary and wildlife viewing area in Nye County to provide for the humane placement and care of wild horses and burrows.
Chair, if I might?
Yes, go ahead Commissioner Strickland.
I've brought this item forward because we do have a advisory board for the management of wildlife, sitting as the Wildlife Commissioners to Nevada Board. We are struggling with how to manage our, our burrows and horses, so I'm hoping that this group can bring forward some ideas. There has been some discussion about, of course, getting the fencing back up there at Roadrunner to complete that fence with BLMs, and Department of Transportation have offered to help with that, and of course BLM has offered to provide the materials, and Public Works has also offered to work on that particular project. That being said, once it's up, the animals need to be moved on the other side with a, with the most care possible, and we need to come up with an area that, like a wildlife viewing area, and I just want to see if that commission would think that that's something that will work, because we've seen how many people come to see the horses in our parks and, and here at the Calvada Eye, and so wildlife viewing areas are very common for, mostly for birds, and bird sanctuaries, but if we made it, if we did a well job with, let's say, salt licks, mineral blocks, and water provided, but no way for people to feed them or get close to them, we might be able to encourage our wild horses to be appreciated in burrows as they should be. And so that's why I brought this item forward, to see what this other advisory board, this advisory board, board for the management of wildlife might recommend themselves, and that's what I've, I've attempted here, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. I do have, I do have Mr. Fairbaron here in Tonopah wishing to speak on this.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Sean Fairbaron. Good morning Commissioners, my name is Sean Fairbaron. I reside in Perump, Nevada. Today I come forward, first off, just to, you're gonna have to speak up. Oh, S H A W N F A I R B A I R N? Just to give a little bit of clarifications in the background, Nye County already has on record a county wildlife advisory board. Everything I can find on it, it went defunct around, in around 2020. So I'm just here to try to get that reestablished, re, have the county, county board appoint new members if need be to serve on it, to get the ball rolling. I was the previous chairman of the Clark County Wildlife Advisory Board 15 years ago. We were able to do a lot of good things for Clark County there, and I think we can, I think I can transfer a lot of it over here too, with, with the fundings and the grants from the federal government that normally roll into, there's a, there's a, there's a grant program or a funding program called Pittman Robertson, and it's a match, a two to one match on anything donated or like time served, or like, not time served, but donated, like you're volunteering your time, manpower, stuff like that, the state or the county or whatever entity is able to go back and reclaim funds for that, for you guys are able to get some, some revenue on the back end, once those projects are done. Another thing is, I don't know if you guys know, but every firearm, every bit of ammunition, every fish and pole, all the way down to fishing lines, to the BBs for the BB guns, all sporting equipment required, it gets a tax. That's also part of this Pittman Robinson Act, and the tax at certain point in time of the year goes to the federal government, and then it gets transferred back to the county. Historically, Clark County was just diverting it back to the state and Nevada Department of Wildlife. We decided to keep it to do more programs locally within the county that we could keep an eye on and better serve the county people. So that's something I want to try to do here also, to be able to serve the county as a whole. And that's all I have to say on the, the county wildlife advisory, so if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
He's gonna want public comment.
Yes. Did you have any questions Commissioner Strickland? Okay, thank you. Let me, let me open this up for public comment at this time, thank you.
Thank you Sean for your comment.
Good sir, here in Tonopah.
My name's Mitchell Stoker. All right, my name is Mitchell Stoker for the record.
What's your last name?
S T O K E R. But everybody calls me Ron, so anyways, legal name. Anyways, I like to talk on behalf of Sean, I represent an organization called Wildlife and Habitat Improvement of Nevada. We mainly work in southern Nevada for wildlife and habitat improvement, and Sean's been an incremental part in helping our organization and helping wildlife, and you know, from horses to coyotes to mule deer, you couldn't do any better than to have Sean in your corner. So as a group, we'd like to support him, so thank you.
Thank you Mr. Stoker. I have someone else here in Tonopah?
For the record, my name is Chrissy Pope, P O P E. I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but I am the Chair for the Nye County Wildlife Board. We do have monthly meetings, I do attend the Nevada Department of Wildlife Commissioners meetings. I'm sorry that you didn't know that we have our meetings, they get posted, we do, I do have a full board, and the board is appointed through the Commissioners. I myself was approved or voted by the Commissioners on this board, so it is an active board here in Nye County. With this number seventeen, and I am going to talk to the Wildlife Commissioner, I mean, our Wildlife Board, our CAB members, because wildlife and horses are, they hate each other. So we have a lot of problems with the wildlife side of it, to what the horses do, to springs, meadows, things that existed when I was a kid, those springs and meadows don't exist anymore because wild horses stomp them. They run our wildlife out of canyons. We really, really have a hard time with the wild horses and stuff. If we did do, I'm not against a sanctuary for wild horses in burrows, but we do have to take into consideration the feed bill, the, you know, the salt blocks, I mean, they still need their supplement if you're bringing them into captivity. So I don't know if you guys realize that, yes, people do love the horses, I have horses, I absolutely love them, but when we go down this road and you open up, unless BLM, the Forest Service, if they're on board, to give funding and to apply for grants and stuff like that, I think that this is a great thing, but just be prepared for a very large bill because we're gonna have to get the money from somewhere to take care of these horses. As it sits right now, you know, we have holding facilities in Reno, and they have a hard time managing, you know, that's why BLM can't gather as much as they want to, or the Forest Service, because we don't have the, the holding facilities are maxed out. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you, thank you Ms. Pope.
Chair.
Appreciate that.
Strickland here, I know I'm interrupting public comment, but I want to make sure that Ms. Pope realizes that we have no intentions of doing anything like what she just said. I'm hoping that that board is going to come up with a way to manage horses that does not involve them being pinned and fed, but managed on our, on our range that exists in a way that they remain wild. And so I apologize, Ms., we need to talk, so I just want to make sure I made that perfectly clear, that is not the direction that I would hope that you would come up with, because yes, it's wildlife and you should be managing it, you should be doing something to help us with this. So I need that board to step it up, it's time we do something about this, please, thank you.
Yes, and I have asked for backup material, just so that I can prepare and get my board on, so if you have anything to provide to me as the Chair for the County Advisory Board, I would greatly appreciate it.
Forthcoming at your meeting, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner, and thank you Ms. Pope, and, and also Ms. Pope, if you don't mind, before you, if you're leaving chambers, I would get Mr. Fairbaron's contact info as well.
And I'd like to ask her-
We are still open?
A question at some point, so please don't leave right now.
Okay, thank, thank you Commissioner Cox, I do still have public comment open, as soon as I close, then I, we can call her back up if you have some question.
We have someone in front.
Yes, Ms. Lane, go ahead.
It might sound like a good idea, but like the lady said too, if you fence them in, you're gonna have to... Is that better?
Ms. Lane, can we get you to, can we get you to say your name and spell it for the record, thank you.
Sorry, Priscilla Lane, L E N E. She's correct, if we fence the horses in, you are gonna have to preserve, present a way to feed them and make sure they're, have medication for veterinarian's assistance, but the other thing is too, you're doing the same thing, and if you have, I'm sorry to say, but if you have the BLM and the Forest Service involved, you're gonna have your hands full, because the Forest Service just killed three hun, three, 30 horses at the Arizona Sitgrave Forest, because they said they were feral. This is a situation that is also aware that's going on, but the other thing is too, what type of a sanctuary, you're, you gotta have 50 acres per horse. And that's, that's considered a lot, and if we have as many horses as they claim they do, which they always overexaggerate everything they do and say, then, I don't know, I think you're gonna run into a situation that's gonna cause more problems than what it's worth. I think if the horses were left alone, and if there was a way that if they, we have a drought, they're not gonna breed, they're not gonna go on, they're gonna, they're, God's given them a thing to where they can handle their own natural habitat, their own natural everything, and far as them go, you can see the difference between a cow and a horse once they've traveled. A horse travels, they poop, they, the seed, they reseed the environment, and they keep on. The cattle, when they go, yes, they get there, but by the time they leave, they leave nothing, no seeds, no nothing, and then that's something else that you should reconsider. The horses have a lot more beneficial help to us than we are to them, and whenever we get involved with nature or anything else, we seem to destroy it. So I think we should just leave the horses alone, if we can find them a place to be, that would be great, but I think when you get the BLM or the government of any entity at all involved, you're gonna have problems, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Lane, do we have anybody on the phone, please Sam?
Yes Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Ed Shaw, S H A W, and I thank the Commissioner for bringing this forward, there does need to be something done to protect these animals. If we continue letting BLM manage them to extinction as they are, we will not have any of these beautiful American wild icons left. I do feel that there has been some misinformation stated today, and I think it's just due to not being aware, so I encourage everyone that is interested in this to attend this meeting, if they could be sure to let the public know when their meetings are, that would be fantastic, and thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Shaw, go ahead Mr. Jim in Perump, please.
Hi, I'm Eddie Jim, last name J I M. I also think that might be a bad idea to go with that Wildlife Commission, because they're, they're basically puppets for BLM from what I can see. BLM seems to have the last say. You gotta consider too, you know, this, you know, this could be a problem, a lot of environmental laws have been changed from this to the last, from this to the last administration, which is, which is, which I see is going to be harmful to the wildlife and replaced by mining and solar farms in this state. And let's, let's talk about the train derailment in Palestine, Ohio. A second here. Look at the environmental laws that have been changed, so no, you know, so nobody questions that derailment, is it why this town's people can't get help because environmental laws have been lifted? That's another possibility, because I, I spent my own dime a few weeks ago to send somebody up to Reno, and basically they tell you environmental laws have been lifted, so we basically don't need the public's comments, we don't need environmental comment, we don't need this so-and-so comment, that's the, that's the things we, I got out of it, and let's, but since we're on wildlife here, I worked for a solar company, I did that because people in the government kept telling me what a great idea this is. So anyway, I'll make it short, first you're put, when you get hired, you're put in a classroom, and you go through turtle training, and anyway, and when they're done, they ask you questions, anybody got any questions? Nobody had questions, I had a couple, and people look like, look at you like you're an idiot for asking questions, but so what? Anyway, when I did work there, they told you, don't run over any turtles, you could close this project down.
Excuse me Chair, I apologize for interrupting Michelle Nelson for the record, but we're a little bit off the agenda. This is for the placement and care of wild horses and burrows.
Still a wildlife.
Please continue Mr. Jim, you have five seconds added to your time, and you have eighteen seconds left, sir.
Okay, as it goes, somebody eventually, they said they'd close the project down for a few months or so, if you run over a turtle, so somebody did run over a turtle. Two weeks go by, and they come back and say-
Thank you Mr. Jim.
We're allowed to only run over juvenile turtles, so we're all right.
Do we have anybody on the phone, please Sam?
Yes Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record.
Morning, this is Timbo Henon, D O H A N N O N. First of all, I think it's a great idea, and thank you Commissioner Strickland for bringing this to the commission, regarding humane placement and care of wild horses. Far too often we see horses, wild horses waiting on by field number one or over by the ball fields at Ian Deusch, waiting to get on the field so they can go play, if you will, and creating a potentially unsafe environment if you have small childrens around, especially when you have the stallion, a mare, and its young one, and maybe two stallions there, or gelding, if you will. So the humane placement is very important, and can be very vital. The other aspect to consider, we talked about sanctuary, we talked about feeding and things of that nature, I've had extensive discussions with UNR Cabinor, which is College of Natural Resources, regarding this issue, and it is the issue, we have roughly 40,000 wild horses in the state, and the state handles about 15,000 to 17,000 successfully, so we have a gap there, and part of this will help fill that gap and give an opportunity in sanctuary, if you will, places that the horses and the burrows can be in a natural habitat. places that the horses and the burrows can be in a natural habitat. The, the other aspect or things to consider, you know, being on the Nye County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, you know, a park of some sort or some nature or viewing areas is definitely something that would be value-added to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bohannon. Go ahead, Ms. Trenner in Perump, please.
Tina Trenner. Oh, God, my voice. Excuse me. T-R-E-N-N-E-R. Believe it or not, you hear my voice, I used to have a radio show. And about thirty years ago, I interviewed Harry Reid. And one of the conversations that we had was about the wild horse issue. They say that the craziest or most insane thing you can do is to do the same thing over and over again and expect a different outcome. We were doing the same thing thirty years ago. Harry Reid had no answers, the government has no answers. There's forty-some thousand horses in Nebraska that have been rounded up and moved back there, and taxpayers are paying to feed them, they live in corrals, their freedom has been taken. They are nothing more than welfare recipients on government cheese. And there they are. And because we've never one time made an honest attempt to number, find out how many horses there really are, that's always a lie. We've never done anything to attempt to try and curb their numbers the way a horseman would do it. Not the way some bureaucrat out of Washington DC does it, but honest-to-God horsemen, I am one, that know what they're doing and know how to take care of horses. As far as horses being a danger, the wild horses, right now, folks, there's two studs and a mare and a baby right out here on the grass in front of the B-O-C-C. If those two studs get in a fight, I will recommend to you to get the hell out of the way. If you need someone to tell you that, you're a dummy. So all I can tell you is these horses need to be managed in a humane and professional way. And there are ways to do it. I've done it, I had over a hundred head of horses, I exported horses all over the world, I raised four world champions, I know what I'm talking about. This is mismanagement. The government's here to help you, the heck they are. And they've done the same thing, running these horses with helicopters till the baby horses have no feet left, till they have to put them down, till they freeze their lungs in the winter when they run them, they drop over dead from the heat. A monster from the sky comes to fix those horses every so often. We should be ashamed of ourselves for doing the same thing since I talked to Harry Reid thirty years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Strozi here in Tonopah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Honey Strozi, S-T-R-O-Z-Z-I for the record. I am here now as the Secretary for the Advisory Board to manage wildlife. I just would like to notice the public that, like Chrissy Pope said, we are alive and, well, we have meetings typically six months out of the year, which is following the Nevada Wild Dive Commission's agendas. We have that typically a week before, so we can plan on those meetings and making our recommendations to the board. Our next meeting is going to be at the, the last week of April. I have this posted on the Boards in Administration down there in Perump. I also have the agendas posted at the courthouse in Perump. They are posted three places here in Tonopah and on our website. So possibly, maybe I'm not reaching out to enough people, maybe that's why there are some folks that are confused or maybe not, you know, they're, they're, they just don't know that we exist. So maybe I just need to reach out to a few more people. If you guys would like to reach out to me, you can email me. My email address is honeystrozzi@gmail.com, and I can add you to our distribution, our email distribution.
Thank you very much. And thank you for making your email so easy.
Good morning, everyone, sorry. Sean Farrarren again. I've been on the county website and the last, excuse me? Oh, F-A-I-R-B-A-I-R-N. The last agenda that I even saw was from 2020, and I saw Chrissy Pope's name on there. I think I've tried to reach out to her once before on an email, maybe twice, and never got anything. That's why when, what's, when came to me about doing something for Curse Wildlife Management Area, that's what we're basically here for today. The advisory board was, was more of an offshoot because it was, if, if, if we don't, we don't know what's going on, I mean, we've got sportsmans spread out throughout the county. We don't know what's going on, and not everybody goes to the county, you know, the I, let's say in Perump, but, I mean, but we know when regulations are coming, we know when, when, the time of year, when it's time to set quotas, things like that. I just wanted to try to get the entire county working together for the wildlife. And, and the people in Perump and maybe people county-wide, they're, they're a little confused with the Wildlife Advisory Board does. The Wildlife Advisory Board takes recommendations from the public and presents them to the State Wildlife Commission. The State Wildlife Commission then puts it on agenda, much like you guys do, and sets tag quotas and season limits and dates and other things that work locally in the county. And they go off the recommendations from the sixteen counties in the state, and from there, they set the tag quotas. And then, for the most part, they normally go and, and listen to the county advisory boards when they say, hey, you know, Mount Charleston's not doing good, they're not doing good this year. Let's just, they're using Mount Charleston for that, for example, or Tonopah, let's say, sixteen's not doing well, dry, no water. They come out with the spring counts and they say, okay, there's, you know, two bucks per hundred does, we, we could add X amount of deer tags. And they put that out to the public, and everybody knows about it. From there, it comes back. The county advisory board seeks input from the public, gives it to the, gives it to the State Commission. State Commission normally listens to that pertaining county, like, hey, we're out here every day, we're out here on the weekends, we see what's going on. They, they can't sustain the horses, the, the donkeys, the elk, and the deer at the same time on this, on this range. That's basically, and then from there, it goes out to be, okay, how do we address this issue? When it deals with honk horses and donkeys, it has nothing to do on a county advisory board level. There's really not much they can do. So with that, I was just hoping to try to clear up any confusions that was, they had or anything. But we are here to try to get the advisory board to give their blessing on the wind project for the Curse Wildlife Management Area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another one here in Perump.
Okay, hold on, hold on, please. I have somebody on the phone, please.
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Laura Larson, L-A-R-S-N. I just want to let the board know, you know, I applied Deborah Strickland for, you know, trying to do what she's doing right now. But I want to also look at it different way about this. You gotta remember, these horses were here before we were. I have horses that come on my property at least twice a week, eating my, eating my grass, and then I just saw one about two weeks ago give birth to a little, a little horse regarding the fact that they were on Simkins, more near 160, and a bunch of us were protecting the little one from going on to 160. They were here before we were, we gotta remember that. God's that you're putting them here for a reason, you know, they're wild horses. We knew this when we all moved here. We have to remember that. You know, so I just wanted to share that information, that we need to look outside the box in addition, that, you know, these horses were here before us. And by caging them and stuff, there's gonna be a lot of maintenance, gonna be a lot of stuff, and they're not used to that, they're used to running around and being free and doing what they want to do. So God bless you guys, have a blessed meeting. Thank you for letting me speak today, and I hope everybody has a blessed day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Go ahead, Ms. Williams in Perump, please.
Thank you, Helene Williams, H-E-L-E-N-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. I spoke to you a couple of weeks back about the bill in the legislature. I believe the direction that you are going, Ms. Strickland, is the right direction. I think part of the problem is education. The general public has no concept about the fact that they can be fined for feeding wild horses. This needs to be posted. And six months, twelve months ago, I asked you to post signs in Nye County. I asked that the Bureau of Land Management on their land post signs that if they feed the horses, they get fined. And it's, it's not a cheap fine, and it increases every time they do it. One thing that bothers me, especially here at the I, is people come in with their dogs and they take the leash off the dog and let the dog run wild. And the horses are here, and I think it's dangerous. It's dangerous because what's gonna happen is if the horse kicks the dog, the owner's gonna get caught up in the middle of the situation. I love seeing these animals, they are beautiful. The donkeys and the horses, and the majority of people that live in this community adore them. And I think trying to protect them is something that we need to do after all. If this bill passes, they are going to be the wild horse animal of Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair. No, no one else here in Perump.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. I, I'm going to close public comment at this time hearing and seeing none in Tonopah, Perump, and on the phone. And Commissioner Cox, I will turn it over to you. I know you had a couple of questions for the Chair of the Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Cox.
Yes, I, I just had a couple-
Ms. Pope is coming to the podium.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Cox.
Okay, I can't see her down here, so I, I'm not sure, yeah. Okay, there we go. Okay, yeah, I just, you mentioned you were on this board, and this board's been going for quite some time. And I needed to ask you, who appoints you to this board? Who appoints your board? And how many are there, how many members?
The, you guys, the county commissioners, appoint each position on the board, on our county advisory board. And we have five positions. And we, we receive our letters of when our terms expire, if we want to stay on the board. You know, we're voted back in by you guys.
Well, because I've been on this board ten years, and for some reason, this board that you're talking about does not sound familiar, so I don't think that you've been coming in front of the board for appointments like you should be. And that's no fault of yours. But it doesn't, it just doesn't ring a bell for some reason. What is your exact name of your board? I've heard it called a couple of different things today, so.
Yeah, so of course, it has an acronym, but it's the Nye County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife. And the State Department, I submit a budget every year, and the State Department sends Nye County a check for funds that pays for me or any of our cab members to attend their monthly commission meetings.
Okay, because-
Because we take-
Oh, go ahead. I, I don't remember hearing any reports from you people at all, and now I'm hearing that you've not done anything basically since 2020. So I'm not sure anybody else up here knows what's going on either. And I have a couple that have been here for four years plus. So who's responsible for communicating directly with the county manager or the county commission that's on your board?
I am the Chair for the Nye County Cab, and I am happy to present information to you guys. These are lengthy things, I, I'm happy, I, whatever I need to do to make sure that you guys are aware of what the state is changing, with policies, LCBs, anything like that, that's a change in wildlife, I am happy to come and inform you guys about. And I'm happy to do that on a monthly basis. Whatever you guys need me to do, that is why I am appointed by you guys. I am an avid sportsman. I was born and raised in Tonopah. I, I am happy to represent this board to the state for the wildlife, to the wildlife commissioners. Because I attend so many of those meetings and stuff, I was appointed by the Nye County, I mean, the Nevada Commissioners to a Mule Deer Enhancement Committee. So that's a separate committee that I was appointed to. Whatever I can do to make sure that you guys have the information that you need, I am happy to provide that.
So do you also work for the state or just the Nye County?
I work for the town of Tonopah, I'm the Tourism and the Events Coordinator.
Okay, so then you're appointed by the Town Board of Tonopah?
I, I am appointed-
Separate position.
Yes. It's not a paid position, it's a voluntary position. All of the positions that are appointed from the Nye County Commissioners are not paid. They're voluntary positions. The Wildlife Department does a budget every year for every county advisory board, and they give funding to Nye County, to every county, to support their future projects. They want the sportsmen's, their input, so that's where I come into play. I listen to our sportsmen, I listen to our county, and I take that information back to the wildlife commissioners. And so they pay for me to go back and attend all of their, their monthly meetings. Sometimes they're in Vegas, sometimes they're in Elko, sometimes they're in Reno. Every month, they meet, and I present what I need to present from Nye County and our sportsmen.
Okay, so who do we have on the board that's been appointed for the Perump area?
We had an open position on the, here, I think it was about a year ago, maybe. And, no, there was no applicant submitted from Perump. So the position, the only applicant we had was a hunter from Tonopah. So my co-chair is Ryan Perchetti. I have John Terrace, who's been on the Nye County Cab for fifteen years. I have Steve Bain, and my newest member is Sammy Jeffries.
Okay, and all those people are from up north?
They are from Tonopah. Like I said, we did have, Sammy Jeffries was an open position, and we did not, the, I think it's the Clerk's Office handles all of the applications. I don't handle these things. When the Clerk's Office gets an applicant, they bring it in front of the board. And the board, or you guys, make the decision on who to appoint as the fill-in position for the Wildlife County Advisory Board.
Okay, well, thank you. I, and you've been, you've been how many years on the board?
I've been since 2018, and since 2021, I have been the Chair.
Okay. When do you have your meetings? How often? Or what, when's your next meeting?
Mainly, it's gonna be the end of April. What I do before I send out the agenda and the information to Honey Strozi, she is my secretary, then I wait to get the agenda and the support materials from the Wildlife Department. And then, once I get those, then I know how many, because I have to have any information sent back into the Wildlife Department within three days. So I usually try to set it like the week before the Wildlife Commission meeting takes place.
Okay, so you're, you're being Chair, you're representing all of Nye County on this wildlife, to the Wildlife Department?
Yes, I am.
So you're not really getting- So you're not really getting any feedback from anything that we need in Purump area? This is all based out of Tonopah, right?
Nope. I have several people that reach out to me from Purump, from Armegosa Valley, wherever in Nye County. I even have other counties because we collaborate together. My email address is on the Nevada Department of Wildlife website. My phone number is there. I have trappers, fur bears from all over the state of Nevada trying to, like I said, just get us all collaborated together as county advisory boards. So my information is there. And like I said, I have Tom Benz from Purump. He reached out to me regarding the next thing that we're going to discuss. So, you know, my information is out there for people to reach out to me. And I apologize if nobody was able to get ahold of me because I, my, like I said, my phone number, my email address are on the Nevada Department of Wildlife website.
Okay. And are you aware of the fact that we have a new board that is trying to put through a ordinance to stop the roundup of the wild horses with helicopters? And we have some pretty active people on there right now. Has anybody made you aware of that so that you could get in contact with them? And perhaps consider what's going to be done to help support them?
Horses are not wildlife. When, this problem has been an issue in many, many.
I'm sorry, but we probably should reconsider those words, Ms. Pope. They're about ready to be named as our state horse. So we need to give some attention to this matter, please.
Okay, and I am all for ears. This is my personal opinion. When I take these things to the Wildlife, to the Wildlife Department, they don't handle the horse issues. BLM is oversees wild horses and the Forest Service, depending on where the line is within the mountain range, if it's Forest Service or BLM. So when we take these, the county advisory boards, there's many, many problems with Mustangs. When any of the boards, and I'm happy to put up the fight and to move forward with Ms. Strickland's proposal and stuff. I would love to read it. I would love to know more about what the plan is. Because I can take that to the Wildlife Board. When, unfortunately, when we take it to the Wildlife Board, the Wildlife Department, the commissioners, they put it back on the Forest Service and the BLM. That is their job. They are to manage those. The wildlife are fur-bearing animals. They manage those. BLM and Forest Service are, that's what they're supposed to manage, is the wildlife, not the Wildlife Department. But any ideas, recommendations, things like that, they do listen to and they can hand over the recommendations from our county commissioners and county wildlife or advisory board, that information. They will pass that information on to the BLM and the Forest Service.
May I, Commissioner? Chair, I'm really appreciative that Ms. Chrissy Pope has come up and she has stated that she's willing to work on this project. And I know that Commissioner Cox and I have a passion for this. And we are looking forward to being in close cooperation with your group to see that we can get something done. If we can get this board, our board of county commissioners, to move an agenda item forward to you. So Chair, I feel that we have the ability to work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
I have.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I'm still here.
Ms. Pope, I have, I have a, I'll come right back to Commissioner Cox. I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No.
I know you mentioned you have a meeting at the end of the month. Are they always up here in the north? Or do you have them where you, you will go to, or go, so you'll go to Purump?
If I do that, I have to pay for the funds out of my own pocket to travel to there. We don't get reimbursed for our commission meetings. But I do open it up to Zoom. I do open it up to just phone calls because they are, we have open meeting law. We do follow those guidelines. We record them all. All the minutes are turned in to the Nevada Department of Wildlife. So those are always options. If I am going to be somewhere, I don't mind holding a meeting somewhere. But unfortunately, that's taken money out of my own funds. The state only gives back to the county for me to attend their meetings.
I understand. Okay, so before we leave, we will get with Honey Strozi and we'll get our, our contact. She has all of our contact information, right? All of the commissioners. So obviously, we want to be engaged and more informed as to what you're actually doing and what we've done.
Of course, yes.
By, by appointing the last member, Sam Jeffries. And I do recall, I do recall that, but that was, well, that was within the last year, I believe.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yes. Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Cox.
Okay. I have a problem with any more government intrusion than what we've already had. Right now, we've got BLM and Fish and Wildlife and the Forest Service and they're all interfering with, they're interfering with what we're doing and they're not helping us any. So, and talk about viewing horses. My God, you can view a horse anyplace in town right now. And, and so we don't need anybody to manage our viewing of horses. And I'm glad to hear this is all being done up north. But I don't think it's a very good fit for the South. And we have this new group, like I said, that has just been putting together their organization. I would like them to be able to contact your organization and if they have any questions or et cetera. So if you could send something down to the county manager, maybe he could put you two in touch with each other. But I don't want to make a commitment, right, at this time to be involved in anything that's going to interfere with what we have down here. I'm sorry that we don't have anybody on your board. I guess it wasn't advertised very well. Or I'm sure, I know people that would have came forward. So I, I don't know where to stand on this other than I did hear your remarks that you made when you first came out that said, you know, wild horses are bad, they do all these bad things. So I don't think anybody's heart up there is going to be happy with anything a horse does. At this point, we just need to take care of what we have down here. Maybe we need to put together a group that's strictly for the Purump area of Nye County. If you want to move forward with that, I would support that. As long as we can let them do their thing up there and we can do our thing down here. Because, you know, we're north and south, but there are a lot of differences between north and south when it comes to Nye County. You know, we have people with different mindsets. We have different weather conditions to work with. We have different ideas of what is, should be government and what shouldn't be. And so I know the kids down here, they love the wild horses. They can't wait to see them. I have a couple of great-grandkids that I take around just to look at them once in a while. And they always ask to go out and see the horses. That's like a big thing to them. It's because they don't have a lot of other things. But, you know, getting in touch with the 4H would probably be a good idea also for your committee, as well as, I know we're trying to.
Commissioner Cox, are you saying that you can't support the idea of having the, this group look at how we could move the horses on the other side of the fence like they were when I came here 50 years ago? On the other side of, believe it or not, our fence existed?
I think we could do that.
And then have a wildlife viewing area? So you're thinking that this wildlife group shouldn't be the place for that? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I just don't, I, you know, we can do that ourselves.
Right, so I don't see any reason to have action on this item if I don't have the support of Commissioner Cox. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I, I do give you support because we've been trying to get that fence fixed. I've been a year.
I just thought this would be a way to get it done. And if you don't, that's perfectly all right. I just thought it would be the way to do it.
It just turned out to be something totally different than what I thought it was. So we appreciate your help though and we'll be there to see you when we get to move the horses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope.
Okay, I'm finished.
Okay, I believe I closed public comment. I went to Commissioner Cox and Commissioner Strickland for questions and myself, Ms. Pope, the Chair of the Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife Committee. And Commissioner Strickland, I believe you, you just stated that no reason to move forward with this item at this time?
That is correct, Chair. I don't feel that if Commissioner Cox doesn't like this way of going about it, we'll figure out something else. We'll figure it out.
Okay. Thank you. Before we, thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Before we close this item, my understanding is that signs prohibiting people from feeding the horses and borrows have been posted. And I'm not sure if it was people or horses themselves. They may have learned how to read. Don't feed the, don't feed the horses, right? That they've been pulling these off of the fence posts and wherever they've been posted. So we have to, they pull them down, we have to put them back up. And as Commissioner Cox, I believe, said, you know what? There's heavy fines, there's hefty fines if we feed them. And unfortunately, maybe that's one of the directions we need to start enforcing as well. So let's, before we go to, we're going to close 17. We'll revisit another time when, when the commission is comfortable. Please, I'd like to take a five-minute before we go to number 18. Five-minute comfort break, please. Thank you. Commissioners, please. Commissioners, please. Go up. Thank you.
They're coming.
Thank you. County Manager, number 22, please.
Item 22, update on the 2023 Nevada Legislative Session, including Nye County priorities, impacts to counties and actions that counties are required to take pursuant to new legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Sutton, S U T T O N, Nye County Manager and Town Manager for the town of Purump. I'd like to present our very first legislative update that we've presented in a, in a county commissioners meeting. So just to give you a lay of the land of the legislative session, the session began on February 5th and will end on June 5th. It's a 120-day session, which means that tomorrow will be the exact halfway point, the 60-day mark. During the first 60 days, the legislature has been incredibly busy and they have come up with 487 assembly bills, 462 Senate bills, for a total of 949 bills. And there are also some additional Senate joint resolutions and assembly joint resolutions. So that's just shy of 1,000 bills to consider and track as they make their way through the various committee and, and public hearings that are part of the process. If I were to spend just 15 seconds on each of those bills, we would be here for just under four hours. So I won't be doing that today. So instead, I picked just a few of the higher priority items, ones that you all, as Commissioners, have mentioned, some that have been discussed as we've gone throughout this legislative session. I wanted to start first with the Nye County-sponsored BD, which was former BDR and is now Senate Bill 51, which was a bill to increase the salary of county commissioners. I actually just attended the hearing on the Government Affairs Committee yesterday in Las Vegas on that, where some testimony was presented by our lobbyist and also by Vince Guthro, the Executive Director of NACO. One of the benefits is that NACO was able to find support for that. There were other county commissioners who reached out and wanted to support this bill. So whenever there's joint county resolution or county support for a particular item, then NACO gets behind it and they carry the, carry the torch for us, which is good. There were some amendments made that made it more palable to Nye County, or to, sorry, to other counties. One of those was that there would be a 20% increase. And the other one was a 20% increase to the existing county commissioner salaries. And then every year after that, there would be increases that were tied to whatever the state employees got. And so whatever, whatever increases were negotiated in those various contracts would automatically be applied to, to county commissioner salaries. And that's a framework that's been used for, for other offices as well. Another important provision that was added was an opt-out provision. So these, if approved as is, that the bill would go into effect. But counties would have the opportunity if they chose that, or if they decided they don't have the financial resources to support the increases in county commissioner salaries, that then they would not be required to do so. Another significant bill that has just popped up recently, I think it dropped on March 29th, is Senate Bill 421. This is pertaining to solar energy facilities and sets forth various guidelines for regulating those facilities, which are already on the books. And the, the regulations that are being proposed are not particularly onerous, except for one, which is that it's a limitation on counties, boards of county commissioners, and says that they are not allowed to pass any ordinance that is more stringent than the guidelines adopted by the state, which would encompass, obviously, any moratoriums that are being proposed or considered by this board or any other boards. So that one is a concerning one that we're watching as we go throughout the session.
I just hope there's a lot of people listening to that. That means they may want to, they may want to put solar right in their neighborhood. So just making sure everybody understands.
Yes.
It also does one other thing. Sets a precedent for everybody else, all the commissioners, not just here.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Carbone. Another one is AB 88, which requires proof of identity to vote in an election. That's being sponsored by Commissioner Hafen. There is another one, AB 390. What did I say?
You said Commissioner.
I believe you said Commissioner.
Oh.
Only because he wanted to be.
Sorry. Yeah, Assemblyman Hafen, Assemblyman Hafen is a sponsor of that bill. Then AB 391 provides a preference to local contractors who bid on public works contracts. That's an interesting one to watch. Obviously, depending on whoever the particular local vendor or contractor is, that would, could be a good thing or a bad thing. AB 423 is one that pertains to school districts, but I wanted to bring it up in this meeting because they are specifically making changes to allow, to restrict public comment at a meeting if it is not relevant to or within the authority of the Board of Trustees or if it is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being slanderous or offensive. You might recognize that language because it's at the beginning of every agenda that we have. That language actually is not in statute. It comes from case law, or actually, it's from an Attorney General's opinion. And so we've just kind of adopted that. But at least for this particular bill, they want to incorporate that language into NRS, particularly to school boards. My guess is that it'll probably be caught up in AB 52, which makes various changes to the open meeting law altogether. A, there is another assembly joint resolution, and I didn't write the number down, but it's a constitutional amendment to further prohibit lotteries and the sale of lottery tickets. So that's currently in place. But I guess there has been some talk or been a practice of passing laws or granting special charters to, for individuals to be able to operate lotteries or sell lottery tickets in contravention of that constitutional mandate. So there's a constitutional amendment being proposed to tighten that up a little bit, to prevent that. SB 20 is Commissioner vacancies. So currently. So currently, if there's a vacancy, as you Commissioners know, if there's a vacancy, then that is filled by appointment to the Governor. This, if passed, this particular bill would allow Boards of County Commissioners to establish their own process for filling Commissioner vacancies. So it's an opt-in, so in the absence of any other process, then it would just go default to appointment by the Governor, but it does allow an alternate process. And there aren't really any specifics about it, but it allows for alternate process for Boards to appoint their own vacancy or to fill their own vacancies. Yeah, Commissioner Jabors... Chair Jabors, just flip a coin.
No, they're doing a flip.
Oh, okay.
Because currently, it goes to the Governor. If the Governor is in default by not appointing within a certain timeframe, it falls back to the County Commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Now they're reversing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
SB 21 is a population cap bill. As you know, our population went up from the last census. Went up from the last census. This is a board... A bill that's being sponsored by Naco at our request, so we didn't have to use one of our BDRs, so that was great. But what this... What that does, there are certain, what we call, "population triggers," which means that a particular NRS is only triggered or goes into effect once you reach a certain population. So a lot of those population where triggers were set based on the last census numbers that were done back in 2010. And so now, with the most recent census done in 2020, that increase... Our population increased, which took us outside of a lot of population triggers. And so this item would move those population... Those populations to take us out of particular things that we didn't want to be part of. SB 90, as was discussed, makes the Wild Mustang the official state horse of Nevada. It provides a definition for the Wild Mustang, which I won't bore you with. SB 112 is... Oh, as we've discussed in this Board meeting, there is a special assessment that is done by the State Water Engineer for groundwater basins. This bill would provide that the money can't be used to pay salaries and expenses of the State Water Engineer or his or her staff. The other thing that it does, the assessment minimum is... Threshold is currently set at $1, and this sets a maximum of $2. So it provides just a maximum, so it limits... Severely limits how much money can be collected through this assessment. It also requires reporting to indicate how the money was spent within the groundwater basin, which was requested informally by this Board when we had our questions on this particular item, but this would put it into law so that the State Engineers are required to do so. The last one, SB 113, is pertaining to groundwater management plan. So if a basin is designated as a critical management area, current law allows a majority of the certificate or permit holders to petition the State Water Engineer to approve a groundwater management plan. What this bill would do is to kind of limit and give preference to permit holders who own a majority of the water rights.
Seniority, seniority permit.
Right, that's the second piece. So first is, it doesn't treat everybody who has a water certificate as equal. It takes into account how much of the water is owned by those particular water permit holders. And the second thing is, as Commissioner Strickland mentioned, is that it gives preference to those who have senior water rights as well. It also allows a senior water rights holder to opt out of a groundwater management plan that is approved via petition if they didn't sign the petition. And it also requires review of the plan every 10 years to determine if that plan has been effective. And those were the ones I identified as being pertinent to this Board. This will be a standing item until Legislative Session is done. If you have any items that you would like discussed in the future or want to change the format, I'm happy to adjust as needed. The other thing I wanted to do is highlight some of the efforts of our Legislative Team and some of the efforts we've been using to track the Legislative Process. One is that we have a Legislative Team that meets and discusses items internally. We receive information from Department Heads and elected officials. They say, hey, you know, here's this bill. Pay attention to it. We reach out to community stakeholders regarding opinions on bills. Sometimes we'll get a call from the lobby saying, hey, are you guys in support or in opposition to this? And I say, well, we're not sure. We had one on the hospital the other day and reached out to Susan Devilla to see what her thoughts were on that. We participate in weekly Naco Legislative Calls. We participate in Legislative Calls with legislators. And we also review legislative updates put together by various associations. One resource that I wanted to make the Board and the public aware of is that if you have a particular bill that you are concerned about or have questions about, obviously, you're free to reach out to us and we can do some work for you there. But the Legislature has a Legislative Tracking Service, so if there's a bill that pops up that you are concerned about, you can type that bill in and request email updates that will tell you when the bill is being heard, any amendments that are being proposed, when it comes up for hearing and those types of actions. So that's my report. I'm open to any questions that the Board may have.
Thank you, Manager. Are there any questions for Manager Sutton in Perump, please, from the Commission?
Nothing from me, very thorough.
Thank you. I'm glad we got our eyes on those.
And no, but thank you very much.
Commissioner Carbone?
I really don't have anything based on what he has said, but I really appreciate him digging into a lot of these bills, so that they help us understand what kind of problems we may have down the future or what successes we may have down the future. But there is a couple of bills I'm going to probably give you. Has... I'll talk to you offline, but one of them has to do with the Sheriff's Department. It has to do with the laws as far as traffic laws. It changes a lot of things, not to the better. And once I tell you what it is, you'll find that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager. Before you step away, I know you mentioned this was the first, but in your absence at the last meeting, we did have our County Clerk, Mark Kampf, who gave a brief report on some of what you were going to scratch the surface on, but at this time, did you have something else? Clark Kampf, please.
Yes, Mark Kampf, not County Clerk. I just want to add to that, on March 23rd, Assembly Bill 394 was introduced to the Committee of Legislative Operations and Elections, and this bill makes it so that you can only count ballots once, so we could not do a parallel hand count in this county if this bill were to pass. So this is kind of directed right at Nye County here. It's kind of interesting because their temporary regulation that was approved by the very same committee that establishes the procedure for counting ballots by hand specifies that you count the ballots twice. Enough to say, so thank you.
Thank you, Clerk.
We be the bad boys and girls again, huh?
Yeah, I guess.
Yes, Commissioner Sutton.
Thank you for pointing out that it was, in fact, the second one. I meant the first one for where I presented. But that reminded me that there is... This item will be on agendas in the future as well, and I left the invitation open to any elected official that wants to give a report or, you know, raise the alarm on any particular bill that they can do so at this time as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Sutton. Number 23, please.
Item 23, for possible action, discussion and deliberation. Two, one, discuss the bid proposal received for bid number 2023-01 Tonopah Janitorial Services. Two, award bid 2023-01 Tonopah Janitorial Services to Your Mama Cleaning Services in the amount of $119,988. Three, approve, amend, and approve or reject the contract with the selected bidder. Four, fund to 10101 General and 10291 County-owned buildings. Or five, reject the bid and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Strozi.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Honey Strozi, S T R O Z Z I, for the record, Purchasing and Contracts Administrator. This solicitation was published in the paper, and we published this on our website for 23 days. This one, I wasn't anticipating a lot of results or bid proposals, so I reached out individually to those people that I didn't think were subscribed to our website. Some of them weren't interested, however, a lot of people didn't want to do the traveling. We don't have very many vendors here in Tonopah that are willing to do the work. We didn't have any other bid proposals, with the exception of one. And this $119,000 proposal is a $30,000 increase from the last time, which I believe was in 2019. However, you know, the prices of commodities and services have increased, as you are aware. I do have Robert Johnson with Your Mama Cleaning Services here to provide any further updates, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson, who is here in the audience in Tonopah?
Nothing from me, Chair.
I'm wondering how staff feels about the current cleaning, since we had such a discrepancy here in Perump. Do we have a feel for that, Ms. Strozi?
Well, I believe, like with any vendor that we get in here, we're going to receive complaints, just because each department's not quite sure what they're supposed to be doing. We have fielded some complaints, however, the vendor, the current vendor, which is Your Mama Cleaning Services, has been responsive and is typically, you know, the next day they'll go in and fix those complaints.
Thank you. That's all I've got, Chair.
And Commissioner Strickland, I also could speak, as I have an office here in Tonopah. And any time that I've had an issue, not a complaint, but an issue or a concern, as Ms. Strozi stated, it's addressed almost immediately. I am, I have been in conference with Mr. Johnson, and I'm actually happy with the services that him and his team provide here. And unfortunately, for Perump, he is up here in Tonopah. Fortunate for us, sad day for you, because you would be ecstatic, I believe, if he was in Perump.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson?
I don't.
Thank you. Commissioner Carbone?
No, I'd like to have public comment, so I can make a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Strozi. Let me open this up for public comment at this time. Do we have any public comment here in Tonopah wishing to speak on behalf of item number 23? Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Is there anybody in Perump?
No, sir.
Commissioners, thank you. Okay, hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I will close public comment at this time, and I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the contract for Mama Mia Cleaning Services for... And fund out of the 101 General Fund, as well as the 10291 County-owned Building Fund as well.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
I will second that, as long as you amend your motion to say...
Yes.
Mama Cleaning Services.
We're not talking pizza.
Mama Mia.
It's Mama.
Mama Mia. No, it's Mama Cleaning Services, thank you. I'm just making a little...
I think Commissioner Carbone is hungry, he's thinking pizza.
He's Italian.
I'm sorry, who seconded that motion? Was it Commissioner Strickland? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Chair.
And amended. Yes, Deputy District Attorney, Michelle Nelson.
If I also may request an amendment that states to also award the bid to Mama Cleaning Services.
Yes, ma'am.
Your mama.
Okay. And I'll prove my... I'll change my first to include that. Thank you.
So amended.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the Commission? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote at this time, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Go clean.
Jabors aye. Number 23 passes 5-0. Number 19, please.
19, for possible action, discussion and deliberation. Two, one, appoint one member to the Perump Regional Planning Commission due to a resignation from the following list of applicants: LeAnn Dianda and John Koenig. And/or, two, re-advertise for the appointment.
Chair, I can make motion to appoint John Koenig to a term that ends in June 2026.
Second.
Okay. Let me open this up for public comment, please.
We don't have anybody in Perump.
Okay. There's nobody in Tonopah? Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Any discussion from the Commission?
Yep, as it leads on to the RPC, I agree with that.
That's so good to hear.
Thank you. Is Mr. Koenig in the audience?
Oh, yes. He's just grinning from ear to ear, just sitting back there being quiet. Don't oversell the cell, right?
Okay. I was going to ask if he wanted to speak, but we don't have to oversell the cell. There's no further discussion? I will call for the vote at this time.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Jabors aye.
Carbone aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Koenig. You can take the smile off now.
You get what you asked for.
Number 18, please.
Item 18, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt, or reject Nye County Resolution Number 2023-10, a resolution supporting coyote calling contests within Nye County. And, Mr. Chair, we requested that this be opened to ask the Board to approve additional backup. When this item was submitted, I neglected to attach some resolutions from other counties that were in support of this item. Those would include Elko County, Humboldt County, and Lander County. So we request that the Board consider a motion to accept those, and then break for lunch, and then we'll be prepared to move forward with the item after that.
Or, the Chair can consider, since I brought the item forward, that I can tell you that we've got Pershing, Lincoln, White Pine, Elko, Eureka, Lander, and Humboldt, as what I've got, is resolutions that have been done, and not close and take additional backup and move on with the item, but that's up to the Chair.
Commissioner Strickland, do you not find the additional backup to be important on this item?
I do. That's why I brought it up to Sutton, but I also thought you all might be close enough to having this agenda over. You may not want to break for lunch. If we're breaking for lunch, let's add it. If we're not, let's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think it's important that we receive the additional backup in Perump and in Tonopah, especially for the public and for us to review before we have further discussion.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Carbone? Yes. We do have additional items when we return from lunch, but first item to be heard will be number 18.
When are we coming back?
How about 221?
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes, Michelle.
Do we want to have a motion to accept that additional backup before going to lunch?
What a great idea. Is she good or is she not?
I'll make a motion to accept additional backup.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment? Open public comment on this motion? Any public comment regarding this? Acceptance of additional backup?
Ms. Hollis, do you realize it's a motion to accept additional backup only, is the motion? And then we'll hear the item after lunch, when you have more information.
I guess it's just a... Mary Ann Hollis, H O L L I S. I guess it's just a question of process for me. How do we, the public, see this additional backup information? How do we see it? To read it, digest it?
On the record?
This is Janie. We'll make sure that copies are available for the public when we return after lunch. So you'll be provided a copy as well as the...
So you'll be provided a copy as well as the commissioners at the same time.
So again, with all due respect, how much time does a member of the public have to read? It sounds like several backup issues. How do, how do we have time to absorb those and?
You'll have the same amount of time as the commissioners do. They haven't seen it either, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So 221, huh?
I object.
Commissioner Cox is objecting.
I need at least three or four more minutes than that.
225.
Okay, yes, I like even numbers.
225, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Enjoy your lunches, thank you. Microphones, please.
Should we call for the vote real quick, Chair? I think she's right.
She's absolutely right. Carbone aye. Excuse me, Deputy DA, if you don't mind, for the record, please repeat that as the video from the clerk's office was, was disabled?
Yes, Chair, Michelle Nelson for the record, if we could have a vote on the motion for additional backup?
Yes, after I close public comment. Public comment is now closed and I will call for the vote.
Carbone aye.
Jabor's aye.
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 Thank you, the motion to accept additional backup passes 5-0. Enjoy your lunches.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, good catch.
Please enter your. For a menu of available commands, press star 1. There are three participants in the conference. All participants are muted and may not unmute themselves. Hand raising is on.
Thank you, Commissioners, we're going to resume at 226. Hope everybody enjoyed their lunches.
Oh, mine was great.
Manager, number 24, please.
Item 24 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject a budget transfer of appropriations between functions within the Nite County General Fund 10101.
Yes.
Do we have, Liz, are you in chambers or are you online?
I am in chambers. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Thank you, I'm sorry. There you are. Thank you.
Yes, as County Manager stated, this is an, it's not an augment to the budget, but just doing a transfer between functions from the contingency to operation transfers. This, these funds will be transferred into the airport fund from the general fund contingency to cover some contracts that were previously approved by the Board of County Commissioners during the February 22 meeting.
Then it was three items, item 27, 28, 29 on that particular agenda.
Correct, and these were contracts with Atkins for tasks out in the airports, Nite County airports. And there are for three different, three different items. As in your backup, I have highlighted in yellow and. Any, any questions that I can?
And then again, these are items that hopefully will be paid back if we do get grants.
Yes, during that meeting, we did identify that these items are, grants have been applied for and we do expect to receive the grants. However, in the event that those grants are not granted to Nite County, I do have to set aside funding for those, those contracts since we are obligated. But like I stated, though, we did apply for those grants and do expect to have them. In the event that we do receive the grants, of course, these funds will remain in the airport funding that can be utilized for future, future airport needs or future projects out there.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox, Commissioner Boskovic, any questions for Liz?
Nothing, sir.
Our controller?
No. No.
Okay, let me open this up for public comment then. Any public comment in Prump?
None, sir.
Thank you. Any public comment on, on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Chair, I can make a motion then.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Prump, Tonopah, and on the phone, I will close public comment and go ahead.
Make a motion to move forward with this item as written.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion from the commission, I'll call for the vote, please.
Excuse me, Chair. Excuse me, Chair. Michelle Nelson for the record, the item as written says to approve, amend and approve or reject, is it which one, if I may ask?
It's approve. It's approve, it's approve, the item, the budget transfer from the general fund.
So amended, second.
And I amend my motion. My motion, excuse me. I'm getting emotional.
Thank you, both motions have been amended. For the record, it's, we are approving number 24. So I will call for the vote at this time.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Jabor's aye. Passes 5-0 for number 24.
One page down.
Did everybody receive the backup in Prump? The backup for number, agendized that item number 18.
We did, thank you.
You did, thank you, and we received it up here. And was, were there enough copies distributed for the public to review?
They seem satisfied, did they have their copies?
Thank, thank, thank you. I'm still going to jump and I'll wait on number 18 for a moment and let's go to number 27, please.
Item 27 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to, one, discuss the bid proposal received for bid number 2022-18, Prump Cold Mix. Two, award bid number 2022-18, Prump Cold Mix to Wolfenstein Construction in the amount of $80 per ton free onboard to the Bielan Pit Prump and $85 and 95, $85 and 85 cents per ton delivered to the Prump Road Yard. Three, approve, amend and approve or reject the contract with selected bidder. Four, fund to 10205 Roads, or five, reject bid and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to award bid, bid number 2022-18 to Wolfenstein Construction to approve that bidder and to fund to 10205 Roads.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Director, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you like me to open it up for public comment at this time? Let me open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone, please, Sam? For number 27.
No, Chair.
Nothing in Prump, Chair.
Thank you, and hearing and seeing none, no public comment in Tonopah and Prump, and on the phone, I will close public comment. Director Bowling, did you still want to have anything to say? Okay, if there's no further discussion from the commission, I will call for the vote, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Jabor's aye. Number 27 passes 5-0. Number 28, please.
Item 28 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to, one, discuss the bid proposal received for bid number 2022-19, Tonopah Cold Mix. Two, award bid number 2022-19, Tonopah Cold Mix to Wolfenstein Construction in the amount of $105 per ton free onboard to the Tonopah Pit and $130 per ton delivered to the Tonopah Road Yard. Three, approve, amend and approve or reject the contract with selected bidder. Four, fund to 10205 Roads, or five, reject bid and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project.
Chair, I'll make a motion when, after we get done with the public comment.
Okay, hold on, hold on, please, Commissioners. Let me open this up for public comment, please. Is there any public comment in Prump?
Nope.
Any public comment on the phone, please, Sam?
No.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Prump, and on the phone, I will close public comment. Do you have anything, Director?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Make a motion, Chair, to award the bid 2022-19. Approve the contract and award it from the road fund 10205.
And second, if you'd award that bid to Wolfenstein Construction.
Okay, Wolfenstein Construction.
Second.
Don't believe that was necessary, but okay.
Just for the record. Okay, do we have any further discussion from the commission? Nothing, Director? Okay, I will call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Carbone aye.
Jabor's aye. Our number 28 passes 5-0. As Commissioner Strickland mentioned, people in Prump seem to be satisfied. I hope that it is to your satisfaction, you've had ample time for us to reopen. Number 18, please.
Item 18 for possible action, discussion deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject Nite County Resolution Number 2023-10, a resolution supporting coyote calling contests within Nite County.
I have no presentation at this time, I was wondering if you would open it up to the, the public specifically. I'd love to hear from Ms. Chrissy Pope if she's still present.
She is, and I will open it up for public comment at this time. Go ahead, Ms. Pope.
Chrissy Pope for the record, P O P E. Hello, Nite County Commissioners, my name is Chrissy Pope and I am the Chair for the Nite County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife. I have been a member of the Nite County CAB since 2018 and Chair since 2021. I would like to talk about Bill AB 102. Bill AB 102 was first brought in front of the Nevada Department of Wildlife Commissioners in 2015 and then again in 2021. During both meetings, the board listened to public comments, listened to county advisory boards, listened to sports women and men, and listened to the Nevada Department Wildlife Biologists. This petition was denied both times by the, by the wildlife commissioners. Most of the commissioners don't feel they have the right to tell people what they can and can't do. No laws are being broken by allowing people together in small groups a few times out of the year to harvest coyotes for money or a prize. There isn't an overabundance of coyotes being shot, there is no harm in the coyote population due to these derbies. Us living in rural areas see the impact that coyotes have, they kill birthing calves, kill people's chickens and other livestock, they kill small dogs and cats, they have even been known to attack small children. These coyote derbies are no different than fishing derbies. And right here in Tonopah, our local rotary club puts on a Father's Day fishing derby. They award sportsmen, women, and children with money certificates for the har, harvest of catch, money for tagged fish, et cetera. Just because I don't care to fish does not mean I don't get to make the decision to take away a sport that is off others enjoy doing. I have been on, I have been one of the Tonopah residents that put on an annual coyote derby. I do this to raise money for the Tonopah High School Rodeo Club. This hunt is put on usually in November or December for 24 hours. I have people from all over, Reno, Yarrington, Elie, Spring Creek, Winnemucca, Bishop, California, Ogden, Utah, and this year I even had a gentleman and his son come down from Idaho. I asked these people, why Tonopah? Why do you travel hundreds of miles away from home to come to Tonopah for a coyote derby? Their response back to me, because you are raising money for a good cause and we want to win a custom belt buckle. I have also heard, because you allow our kids to hunt with us, you don't hold derbies in a bar. And now, and now think about this, this year at our second annual coyote derby, I had 28 teams, two to three man teams, kids under 18 must be accompanied by an adult, $100 entry fee per team. The supporters raised for our rodeo club $2,800 just for showing up.
Finish your last sentence, please, Ms. Pope.
Okay. The winning team won killing four coyotes, second place killed three, and the third team killed one coyote. Can I just add something? I just ask that you guys, please, I urge you to support and pass a resolution supporting coyote calling test and opposing the bill AB 102.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment in Prump, please? Go ahead, Ms. Hollis in Prump.
Thank you, Marian Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. I object to any further discussion on this agenda item. The 28 pages that were at the desk when I walked in allowed me maybe a minute and a half to just count the pages versus read them and absorb them as to what they contain. And it is not fair to the people at home who watch and want to call in and comment not to have this available to them. So I object to this going any further. And in the case that I, that doesn't happen, I'll go forward with my comments. According to Mr. Benz, these contests are best described as social gatherings for fellowship, good times, stories, and life experiences. I've experienced this, but with a paper target, not a live animal. These contests are admittedly not thinning the population. Luring the participants with their mechanical collars and high-powered scope rifles with prizes and high fives as a family affair is as despicable as luring in the coyotes. If this contest does not have an impact on coyotes as a whole, as you claim, Mr. Benz, then just what is your goal? A prize? The largest coyote taken? A family fun day, bragging rights? Are you so bereft or deprived or lacking of something that you are not full of happy? What do you need or want to expect in your life that this contest fulfills? And throwing in an economic stimulus is just a distraction. How does this bill legislate the morals, values, and ethics of Prump that you claim? Why not just throw in, it's our right, and throw that against the wall and see if that sticks? sticks? This is not hunting. It is slaughter for fun, and it is perverse. Mr. Benz claims this is terr, this is a terribly written bill, and I suggest his argument is as well terribly written. May common sense, not a claim of deficit of morals, values, or ethics, guide you in not supporting this resolution that opposes AB one-oh-two? And all of the comments from the previous speaker? What next, shooting fish in a barrel? Because that's about what this amounts to. But I strenuously object to this going further without this backup material available to everyone who watches also. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, administration, I have a question, please. I received five pages of backup.
If I may answer, Chair?
Double.
The reason.
We're finished, Ms. Hollis, please sit down. I'm asking a question of administration. I received five pages double, double-sided of backup. Is that correct?
Yes, Chair, that's correct. So the original agenda posting was the resolution plus letters of support, and the last nine pages to the current backup are the resolutions from other counties that they've passed. And just for the record, it was distributed online, so people on the phone can have access to it as well.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Go ahead, Ms. Lane in Prump, please. State and spell your last name for the record.
Priscilla Lane, L I N E. I think it's a little uncalled for, too. They just had a contest up north somewhere that killed four hundred coyotes. What's the logic of killing these animals when they're the one to help keep the ecosystem intact? They keep the rodents under control, the rabbits, the, whatever does you want. You start killing them off, and the next thing you're going to be abundant and overrun by all these rodents. The other thing is, is I don't think this is a sport either, to call them out, to shoot them, or to do it, and you're teaching the kids to say this is a good thing? This is not a good thing. I had nothing against hunting. I have nothing against, you know, if that's what people enjoy doing. I had a, a boyfriend that used to like to hunt. We went hunting. We did the thing, and we, all the other stuff. But this is not, this is not hunting. This is like, what do they call, the tro, trofer hunters? This is not, this is not civilized. This is not, this is inhumane, actually. There's nothing right about this whole situation. And to teach your kids this way, and I see things on the petitions, I sign petitions all the time, for they're pe, teaching kids to step on rabbits and kitty cats, and, and now they want to teach them how to shoot coyotes, and for what reason? Their purpose is here for a reason, not to begot, they're using them for target practice, and that's what it is. Just like they're killing, what, four hundred coyotes? A hundred and fifty cows down in Texas? I mean, they have got too many ducks and geese, so let's get rid of them, let's shoot them, too. That seems to be our thing in our country right now. It's a killing spree. They enjoy killing, they enjoy the idea of killing, and this is just not right. I just hope it doesn't go through. This, we don't need this kind of enjoyment, if you want to call it that, in our county or in our city, our town. And we need to protect our kids from learning such obnoxiousness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Anybody here in Prump? I'm sorry, here in Tonopah? Go ahead, sir. Mr. Stoker.
Yeah.
Yes.
Still Stoker for the record. Commissioners, thank you so much for letting me be here today. I didn't intend on talking on this today, but I'm here, and I've got an opinion, so. S T O K E R. So if we were to have a contest for who shot the most coyotes in Nevada, it'd be the Nevada Department of Wildlife, and the price for that contest would be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's how much they pay for lethal management here in Nevada for coyotes. And so if we're talking about unethical killing and things of that nature, and a group of people gathering together to enjoy a sport, the Nevada Department of Wildlife shoots them out of helicopters unless they're way, you know? With these coyote calling contests, they do gather, they do provide economic stimulus to small towns and small regions. They don't hold these contests in Nevada, or in Clark County, things of that nature. It's similar to, it's, it's a moral issue, you know? I don't think it's right what you're doing, and the other side says, well, it is right what I'm doing. I mean, you could argue the same thing with a football contest causing CVC. I don't think it's right that people are hitting their heads together and getting brain injuries. That doesn't mean it's my right to tell them to stop doing it. I have five kids. We hunt, we don't hunt coyotes, but we do gather together, we do sit around fires, we do enjoy the great outdoors, and I'm able to enjoy those outdoors and see those wildlife because of good predator management, good herd management. And that's why this sport came together. If coyotes are threatened, the state of Nevada will see it, and they will stop it, and they will manage their herds. But right now, the predation's happening because of high snow levels. These coyote packs are just tearing apart our, our mule deer herds and our elk herds. The, the deer can't get out of it, and these contests might not have a huge impact. Man, if I saw a coyote contest that killed four hundred coyotes in a, in a contest, that'd be amazing, but the most I ever heard were sixty, you know? But what we're, what, the, the main right that we're, we may be impeding if we do this as a right to assemble, and the right to make choices, and the freedom to do what we will as Americans. And these contests stop that right to assemble, and that's what scares me about it. I, I don't coyote contest, I don't coyote hunt, but I'm not going to impede somebody's right to assemble and to, to hunt something that the federal government deems is their right to do so. And as far as like shooting fish in a barrel, they'll be doing that next week, April twenty-ninth, at Pranigat, when they pull out all the carp. So, and that is a contest they're having. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Stoker. Go ahead, Mr. Jim in Prump, please.
My name is Eddie Jim, J I M. This is basically cruelty to animals, my personal opinion. This is a removal of coyotes. I also didn't mention that I am part of the Prump Poetra, Poetra tribe. That is, these animals are sacred to us. Any wildlife is sacred to us. I don't expect the public to understand that, but, you know, we've heard complaints after complaints on these coyotes. The people that complain, they should just found another place to move to. The coyotes were already here. Find, find another town that accommodates you. You didn't have to move here. And and also this, these solar farms that are going in and out, or outer perimeter of the valley, they're going to just bring all the wildlife in, so they're going to wind up in your lap. I blame the public for this, or the government, whoever, because those coyotes are going to be coming in, in our community a little more. They'll, they'll find food that people leave behind at the solar sites, and, and they'll start following people around. Believe me, I know. I, like I said before, I worked at solar site, and that's exactly how it was. You can't pick up the trash, because when a lightning starts, they get you out of there real quick, and trashes are still full. The wind comes, blows them all over, and the animals are in it already. So I'm against this at all, all of this. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
No? Anybody here in Tonopah, please? Mr. Garcia?
I'm Luke Garcia, for the record, G A R C I A. Thank you. I am in agreeance of this. I support all of your recommendations for it. So please, go ahead and move that forward. That's just my personal opinion, and that's all I have. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're in Prump, if you're ready, Chair.
Ms. Elliott, are you here to speak on public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Elliott.
Stephanie Elliott, E L L I O T T, and I am speaking today as a Nite County resident and exercising my right to public comment. I would also like to remind everyone that this agenda item is actually in regards to the adoption of a new Nite County resolution, not Assembly Bill one-oh-two, which has also been a topic of discussion during this item. I urge the commission to reconsider the proposed resolution, two zero two-three-dash-ten, which supports hunting contests that would potentially alter the ecosystem of our fragile desert. According to the National Geographic, every ecosystem has a certain species that are critical to the survival of other species in the system. The keystone species could be a huge predator or an unassuming plant, but without them, the ecosystem may not survive. In any arrangement or community, the keystone is considered one of the most vital parts. A keystone species is an organism that helps hold the system together. Without its keystone species, ecosystems would look very different. Some ecosystems might not be able to adapt to the environmental changes if their keystone species disappeared. That could spell the end of the ecosystem, or it could allow an invasive species to take over and dramatically shift the ecosystem in a new direction. One of the three types of keystone species cited by scientists are called predators. And in consideration of the southwest coyote, predators help control the populations of prey species, which in turn affects the quantity of plants and animals further along the food web. Again, I request that each commissioner carefully review the ramifications that may result in support of Resolution two zero two-three-dash-ten. Let's learn from the mistakes made in Yellowstone National Park when a mass hunting program killed thousands of wolves within the park's boundaries, resulting in a profound change in Yellowstone's ecosystem. In nineteen ninety-five, the devastating decision was reviewed, and wolves have been reintroduced to Yellowstone in an effort to rebalance the biological community. We each have a duty to uphold the fragile equilibrium of our desert home. I personally believe the coyote is a vital keystone species and completely oppose this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in Tonopah wishing to speak on this item? Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Anybody else in Prump, please, commissioners?
Nope, there's no one here at the podium.
No. Okay, hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Prump, and on the phone, I will close public comment at this time, and open it up for a discussion with the commission.
Thank you, Chair. I brought this item forward in concern for AB one-oh-two, which was mentioned earlier, which would ban the calling contests within Nevada. And there has been an outreach from those that are hunters, those that are trappers that are currently keeping our coyote population in check. Of the backup that was given to us, we have resolutions from other counties, which was the additional backup that was provided while we were all on lunch, and we have Lander, who is in support, Elko, which is in support of a, a resolution just like this, who all put together their own resolutions, and Humboldt County. The reason for the move of, of the request from the public, a particular petitioner, to do this resolution was so that should this AB one-oh-two move forward, the governor would have the ability to veto that bill should hit his desk. I'm sure that the commissioners and the public realize that I'm a hunter, gatherer, and I believe that through efforts that I have in fact experienced, that we are doing a well job of managing our resources in Nevada. And part of that management has been this program. There have been hunts, just not here in Prump, up in most Tonopah and other outlying areas, they have had this particular kind of hunt. And I will tell you that when you hunt a turkey, you call it in, too. When you hunt a coyote, you call it in. So it depends on what you're hunting, your duck call. It all depends on what you're hunting, so the calling portion of this is very normal. Elk, same thing. Deer, you get out there and you bugle, and you bring the animal in in hopes that they'll get within shooting distance, so you can harvest the animal. And the animal needs harvested in order to keep the controls in place. We've done a great job in Nevada, and I would just like to not see this particular management process go away from us. I would like to not see the Tonopah High School Rodeo Club lose their ability to raise funds with their particular event that they host. And as you'll remember, or maybe you commissioners haven't had a chance to look at your emails, you did receive three handwritten notes from children that participate in this annual event. So I ask for your support on this, as the petitioners asked me to present it to you. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Strickland. Commissioner Boskovich, do you have anything?
I completely understand both sides of this one, and it's one of those that is not, it's just not easy for me. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox?
Yes, well, I'm not an avid hunter for a reason. Most hunters hunt because they hunt for food to eat. You can't eat dead coyotes. So it's a little bit different than shooting a deer or an elk or whatever. I think the ecosystem by nature does a pretty good job by itself, because if they didn't, we would have been overtaken a long, long time ago by a lot of things other than mice. And I think that, I even hate to set a mou, mousetrap, but they are very destructive fast. And so I see all the letters of support, but they have their reasons for doing it, because all these letters of support are biased, basically, because they are the hunters.
Sorry.
They are the hunters. They're, they're not looking at that from our point of view, and I've already had several people complain, and unfortunately, a few of them haven't been here, but I think the ones that are here are about a hundred percent of our audience at this point, that have ma, made some really good points and presentations, and I don't think that doing this, and approving this because somebody's making money off of it and raising funds is a fair evaluation of what should be taking place in our county. And I don't care if the rest of the world's doing this. I don't like the idea of seeing it here in a resolution form, because they're already doing it. I don't know why we have to make a resolution out of it. We've not stopped them from doing it, but we haven't exactly approved it either. So this, I'm afraid, might be the beginning to the end to a very bad thing for our ecosystem, considering that they eat the mice, and yes, they eat rabbits, and we have plenty of rabbits. You can come out here at night, anytime you want to, on the lawn out there, and there can be, you know, a herd of two hundred of them running around, because we have water there. So they definitely, they need to be managed, the rabbits and the mice and the other, not, not the coyotes. They're doing just fine on their own. I've been here thirty-five years, and I have not ever seen this town overrun by coyotes. You very seldom ever see a coyote. They do not come out in the public, they do not bother people. They come out at night, and they might snatch up a cat or a dog, but most people have learned that you keep your animals in. If you have small animals, you don't put them out. You know, they're not really hunting. Dogs and cats are hunting rabbits, but sometimes they get mixed up, they don't understand the difference. So it's not their fault. But I don't think any way whatsoever we are being overrun around Nite County, Nite County by coyotes. And they have families, too. In fact, they just had three coyotes come across the front of my place the other day, and they were all pups. I don't know where mom was, but they, they go off and they live in the mesquite bushes. They make their dens in there, and they don't really bother anybody. So it's not their fault, they have to eat to live, and I think this is setting them up, and it's cruel, and we have no business getting in their business, and I'm sorry, but I cannot support a resolution. If they continue to hunt, that's one thing, but to support a resolution that says, we think it's okay to kill things, I don't feel is my duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gabori?
This isn't, this is not an easy item to try to bring to the public and try to get them to understand what, what's going on. And it's tough for us to be sitting up here and make a decision when it comes to this kind of, this kind of a process. when it comes to this kind of a process. Granted, it's a, the thing that makes me kind of concerned is, one, I agree with the philosophy of the Indians. They are sacred to the Indians. But again, they're predators, too. I mean, I see them around my property all the time. And if it wasn't for the height of the fence that I have, I'd probably have them in my yard. So I had several dens around my neighborhood. They're all gone. And they're gone because they were probably all shot because they were in the neighborhood not only half a mile away. And they were in people's yards that have chickens and livestock. So you always hear the gunfire going off so you know that they're being taken care of that way. This is a tough one. And I guess I'd like to hear the rest of the, I think we have one more person. I'd like to hear from him how he feels.
Would that be me, Commissioner?
No? Yes, would be you.
Thank you. Well, I understand everybody's opinion. I respect everybody's opinion. I moved to Perump in 1994 and purchased a 10-acre parcel, 10-acre property. It was a mini ranch. And I had livestock. And I raised my daughter there. The first time I called Animal Control was because there was a den, a litter of coyotes that was circling my daughter's swing set while she was in school. And I called Animal Control, and they came out, and they said, oh, I'm sorry, they're gone. There's nothing we can do. And I said, that's it? And I was instructed not to take the law into my own hands, that if I discharged my firearm in a residential area, I would be arrested. And at that time, Animal Control noticed I had a horse trailer and asked if I had horses. And I said, no, I have livestock. And that's how I transport my livestock, for different reasons, to purchase more livestock. I was then told, forget what I just said. There's an NRS that allows you to shoot and kill any dangerous animal that comes by your livestock within six feet. And my response was, I'll be arrested for discharging my firearm for protecting my daughter from coyotes, but it's okay if they go by my livestock. This is an old NRS. It's still on the books. Well, I can tell you that from experience, I lost livestock to coyotes. I did not lure them in. They came to my property. And when they came to my property, I was waiting to protect my daughter and to protect my livestock. I didn't have to call them. This is a different game that is being presented today. It's a game that coyotes play as well, folks. When dogs are in heat, they will send their female into domestic yards, into the residential yards, and luring those male dogs that are in heat. And once they're away from their domain, there lie the litter, the males, ready to attack and devour and kill. That's what happens, folks, with these coyotes when they're not taken care of. And I understand the ecosystem. I understand the circle and cycle of life. I don't think that with this resolution that there'll be any more, there'll be any less people active with this coyote calling. But I want you to know that it's a very sensitive issue for me. As I said, my livestock, I had a lot killed by coyotes. It wasn't all one time. And I had to become smarter than the coyotes to see how they thought, how they behaved, how they acted coming onto my property. So I want to share with you as well, something else, Commissioners and to the public, something that hasn't even been mentioned, maybe just a little scratch. Coyote attack in Las Vegas. Concerns over pet safety. October 2021. Toddler hospitalized in critical condition after coyote attack. Dallas, May 2022. Coyote attacks toddler in Woodland Hills, California in the broad daylight, December 2022. Scottsdale, Arizona, families on high alert after two toddlers attacked by coyotes. March 2023. These are the most recent that I was able to find. They don't just go after the dogs and cats that are left out to relieve themselves early in the morning. They go after these children, these babies, these toddlers. And I say at every meeting, to protect your family and your friends. That includes our children and our babies. And that's where I stand firm on this, that we are protecting our pets, and we are protecting our children and family. There's a 60-day gestation period for these coyotes. They're not going to be wiped out. But they will be controlled if this passes. And they are definitely predators. Predators that are out to kill because they want to eat. And they could care less about your cat or your dog or your toddler that may be on the porch as you run into, enter the, whatever the case may be. I wanted to bring this angle in, to bring reality to what these coyotes are doing. And this was in Perump. This was my experience in Perump while I was living in Perump and not here in the north. And it also happens, it happens throughout the nation with coyotes. We're not the only ones faced with this issue. So with the calling, I'll wrap up with this. With the calling, it may sound inhumane. If you've ever been asleep and woken up by a coyote kill, the sound is atrocious. It's horrifying. It's screeching. And that's exactly what they're doing, is rejoicing that they got a kill.
And you're referring to the animals. And you're referring to the coyotes themselves. Yes, thank you, sir.
The coyotes themselves rejoice after they kill.
And to add to what you're saying is, the reason why we're having those kind of attacks is because we keep moving into the territories that they use the rule over.
Excuse me, Chair, we have a disruption in the room. I was unable to hear what the Commissioner just said. Excuse me. Could you say it again, please?
Please, excuse me, Commissioner. Please, no disruptions. In Perump or Tonopah on the phone, please. I did not, or any other Commissioner that did not interrupt while there was public comment, please don't interrupt us. Thank you.
I was just mentioning the reason why we're having some of these attacks. This is, we've moved into their areas, and now they're hunting. And that's the reason why we have the situation. And I'm not too sure if, in fact, if we make this decision, if it changes anything. That's kind of my point. It's still going to have the same situations going on, regardless if we make this decision here or not.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any further discussion from the Commission?
No, sir. Not up here or down here, wherever we're at.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-10.
Do I have a second? Tabor will second the motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd like to call for the vote if there's no further discussion.
Reluctantly, aye.
Aye.
No.
Tabor's aye.
Oh, boy. No matter how I vote, it's going to go through anyway, so I'm going to vote nay for this and not support. And it's not because, not because I don't like what they're doing. I just don't think that's, I don't like the idea of the games, so.
I understand.
Other than that, I have no problem.
For the record, number 18 passes, three ayes, two nays. Number 29, please, Manager.
Item 29 for possible action. Discussion and deliberation to approve, amend and approve or reject a letter of support for the wildlife and habitat improvement of Nevada's funding request to modernize the Kirch Wildlife Management Area Campgrounds and Facilities.
Chair, I think we've just got a whole lot of wildlife items today. That's three. Thank you.
No kidding, no kidding. We have somebody who wants to talk to this, or?
Yes, Sean Fairbanks.
We have two presenters here in, we have two presenters here in Tonopah.
This is the real reason why I came up here today, so. Mitchell Stoker for the record again. I am with Wildlife and Habitat Improvement of Nevada. I'm a board member, past Vice President. The modernization of this campground is, what we're here for today is to get a support from the Nite County Commissioners. We already sent in an earmark to Amadee's office for $4 million to try to get these campgrounds get improvements done. And the reason for improvements is, it is for wildlife, too. These campgrounds don't have potable water. They don't have, they have restrooms, but the restrooms have no showers in them or anything of that nature. And where it's located in your county is probably the most northeast tip, like as far as you get northeast. And if there was a wildfire, it'd be a great staging ground to get the wildlife firefighters in there. It'd have restrooms for them, and they'd have potable water. And so they'd be able to set up a base camp very easily to fight wildfires. Along with that, it does benefit a lot of your people that live in this county. I know a lot of people enjoy fishing up there and other recreational activities. And so we just come before you guys today just to ask for support and get a letter of support from you guys. So any other questions?
Any questions for Mr. Stoker from the Commissioners in Perump, please?
I just want to commend you for coming forward and spending the whole day with us in anticipation of this item and your drive back. This is great. I wish, I'm hoping that you can get the funds. You've already acquired the $4 million for funding?
No, no. We just have to, we have to submit the letters. I think there's a lot of other earmarks that we're in competition for.
Sure.
So I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get it, but if we do get the letter of recommendation from you, then we can pursue it in other grants and things of that nature, so.
Terrific. No, it's wonderful to have these campgrounds and, you know, whipped into shape. To have all those facilities that you've identified here would be amazing. It'd be more enjoyable for everyone. Thank you for your efforts on this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boskovich, anything, or Mr. Stoker?
Nothing, Chair.
Commissioner Cox?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Carbone?
I'd like to echo the Commissioner Strickland's sentiments. I think it's right on the mark. It's great that we get something like this on the move, if you will. So good luck. If it gets approved, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, we'll see what happens. Thanks for the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoker and Mr. Fairbanks for being here today and representing this good move. If you've looked at the backup, you see how expensive it is to put together restrooms and showers, et cetera, for the folks that want to do some family clean living while they're out in the wilderness camping, so. Okay, I will open this up for public comment, please. Is there anybody in Perump wishing to speak on this item?
There is, approaching now.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bohannon in Perump.
Tim Bohannon, B-O-H-A-N-N-O-N. I have fished at Kirch, and I've caught a Kirch. Kirch Wildlife is a great place to go to and spend some time. I love, absolutely love and celebrate that we're going after funds to upgrade that. Absolutely. Long overdue, wonderful thing to have. You have my full support in that, and go get them.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
No. Anybody here in Tonopah wishing to speak on this item? Go ahead, Ms. Pope. Thank you.
For the record, Chrissy Pope, P-O-P-E. I just want to say I hope that you guys will write your letter of support. Kirch is a great campground. It would be wonderful with showers, restrooms, portable water, and picnic tables, things like that. Maybe more people within the county would utilize. If we had places to stay, the campground was completed. So I hope you guys support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody in Perump at this time?
There is not.
There is not. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Perump, and on the phone, I will close public comment at this time.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a letter of support to win for funding request for the modernization of Kirch Wildlife Management Area.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion from the Commission? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote at this time. Carbone, aye.
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 Tabor's aye. Number 29 passes 5-0. Number 30, please.
General, item 30, general public comment. After three-minute time limit per person, action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on an agenda as an action item.
Is there anybody in Perump for public comment, please?
We do. We have a couple coming forward.
Good afternoon. Commissioners John Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G, for the record.
And congratulations.
I am here to thank you all for appointing me back to the board where I started, so. I have the utmost confidence I will do the job you expect me to do. If you talked to several members of that board, I think you'd find out that they are very happy that I'm back. So, once again, I didn't want to oversell the sell, but I'll thank you again.
Make us proud, young man.
Thank you, Commissioner Koenig. Congratulations. And I know that you won't let us down. Go ahead, Ms. Lane.
That's Priscilla Lane, L-A-N-E. I just have a comment to make. If it didn't make a difference if you had a resolution or not, why have the resolution? It just gives a person more reason to kill. And that we're doing that right now in our country is killing when we have too many of one thing.
Yes. This is on an agenda item, Ms. Lane.
I understand that, but I had to put my comment in there. Make it for the record, please.
Come on down, Ms. Lane.
Go ahead, Mr. Bohannon.
Hi, Tim Bohannon, B-O-H-A-N-N-O-N. Coming to as Secretary of Nite County Parks and Recreation. We had a date change. We were originally scheduled to do as normal piece of business tomorrow night at 6:30 up around Mountain. But because it is Passover Seder, that's being delayed. We're going to be doing it on April the 11th, which is a Tuesday evening, and 6:30. We're gonna be doing it on, uh, April the 11th, which is a Tuesday evening, and 6:30 up in Round Mountain. And, um, we're, those of you who are tuning in, especially those of you may, who may be attending from up north, 6:30 up in Round Mountain. And we are talking about budget-type items and proposed budget for Nite County. And, you know, there's no guarantee we're gonna get anything, but we want to make sure we make some awareness of, of some general maintenance items that are necessary and then raise awareness of potential capital improvement projects as we get going and get that thing formed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
James Medici. Um, I'd like to continue my, to read the letter, the open letter from earlier today that I wasn't able to finish. I'm gonna start at the third paragraph from the bottom. Um, I did get halfway through, but I'm gonna start at the top. The ambulance fleet remains in repair, disrepair, and the units are frequently taken out of service from weekends. A few of our ambulances have over 300,000 miles and then leak fluid, cracks, running through the walls, and the doors are jammed, gets, or get stuck. Front Valley Fire Rescue's ambulance fleet requires immediate attention of Fire Chief Scott Lewis, constantly saying that they're on backwater for years at times, unacceptable when neighboring agencies regularly and timely, in a timely manner, secure new ambulances. Responding to mutual aid assignments outside the Front Valley and taking interfacility transport to Las Vegas also increases the overall wear and tear on the ambulances. Fire Chief Scott Lewis will drive all over the USA to find himself new command vehicles, fire engines, and new fire trucks that only he or one other firefighter can drive. In 2022, Local 4068 firefighters responded to 10,540 calls, 2,586 fire calls, 911 EMS calls, 6,000, 6,039, and any EMS IFTs, 1,915. Local 4068 firefighters are some of the toughest, greatest, and most durable firefighters, EMS providers in the state of Nevada. We shouldn't have to work in unsatisfactory positions, conditions. Utilize outdated protocols from 2014, drive unreliable ambulance, and operate old EMS equipment that should have been upgraded. What we need is a new fire chief that's willing to come in and help us rebuild our fire department from the bottom up. We will continue to push for the safety, health, and mismanagement changes in the fire department and would like to change the, would like to thank the entire Front Valley community for their support. Local 4068 firefighters want our community to have the best possible EMS care and won't stop fighting for you. Please feel free to contact Front Town County Manager and the Nite County Board of County Commissioners to help us assist in removing Fire Chief Scott Lewis from his position and making Front Valley Fire Rescue a better safe place for all. With gratitude, the members and officers of Front Valley Firefighters Association, International Association of Firefighters, Local 4068. That's all I had to say, just wanted to make sure that that letter got read to you so you didn't miss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lackey in Perump.
Darrell Lackey, L-A-C-K-E-Y. Yeah, we got a lot of predatory situations in Perump. One of them is coyotes, the other one is the homeless. You know, they gotta do something in order to get their bellies filled, just like the, like the, like the coyotes, you know? They're gonna do something. They're gonna do something to survive. They're gonna do something to survive. They're gonna take tools from me or you, or they're gonna take something from somewhere. They're gonna do something to survive, but nobody wants to address that. No one wants to, to, to come up with anything. I believe I'm the only one who considers anything about this. We can't just shoot them like, you know, a lot of the, you know, shooters would like to do. I know that most of the Republicans I know hate homeless. They, they think they should just die or move away somewhere else. And I'm not just talking about this room, I'm talking about other Republicans I know that don't come to places like this. People don't come to places like this because they don't see any hope. You know, what are they gonna do? They're gonna hang around in the parking lots? Like, how are they gonna get a job? How are they gonna get an apartment? How are they gonna get something going on? They got nothing going on. So it's just all ignored. Well, as y'all know, I'm willing to do something about it myself. But without your support, I can't do it. So, see you again soon.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Hollis in Perump.
Thank you. Mary Ann Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. I've often wondered why there aren't more people who come and speak, but I will only speak for myself when I come forward as a public speaker and commenter. I review an agenda. I review all the backup data. I do additional research, and I hope to step forward and speak and be believed or be understood. However, this was a prime example today of what I believe to not be transparent and welcoming of the public to comment. I have sat in your chairs. And years ago, I used to be a member of the public that had to wait till after a meeting to speak, and sometimes that was 11 o'clock at night. So this is, this is a treat for me. But it's not a treat when events such as this happen. And then I understand why some people are reluctant to come forward. We come forward with our best information. We can't rebut what someone else may say because they have the last word, and that is the last thing I believe that some of you hear. So I, I, I would say to people who don't want to come forward, I get it now. I get it. Because the public was not appropriately informed of the latest back information. And I believe that there should be some sort of time limit for submitting background or back data or whatever it's called in a reasonable amount of time to make someone like me have not an advantage, but an equal playing field with those who may know more than a member of the public who can only comment on what they have seen, what they have read, and what they have researched, and not something that appears at the 24th hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Hearing and seeing no other public comment in Tonopah and Perump and on the phone, I will close public comment at this time.
Item 31, Commissioner Manager's comments. This item limited to announcements or topics and issues proposed for future workshops and agendas.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox, do you have anything, please?
Um, yes, um, to the manager, and I believe it was item number eight, where there was going to be a presentation by Ms. Sharon Black, and she wasn't here. Was that item supposed to be voted on, or was she just going to speak to her issue? Because did anybody ever get, were they ever able to get in touch with her? I mean, I don't know what to do with the item. It's hanging out there. Do we put it back on the next agenda? Or, um, is it a dead issue? I don't know. Maybe the manager could tell us.
Mr. Chair, through you to Commissioner Cox. So, yes, we were able to get ahold of Ms. Black. She is, stated that she was recovering from a medical procedure. She, we informed her that we would move the item to the next agenda, which was April 18th, and she, she said she should be able to make that.
Okay, fine, thank you.
And, and, and to answer your, and to answer your other question, there was nothing to approve. It was just a report back on how she spent the funds.
Okay. Yeah, I saw it was a presentation, but I didn't know if we were supposed to take it further than that or not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Commissioner Blaskovich?
There's so much, but, um, the one that really gets me is, uh, I think that we, as a board and as a county and as a group of people who all live here, need to figure out some way to put some teeth in some of these funds we're doling out to people because we're getting screwed, and every single one of us that sit here and pay taxes are. So I don't know if this is direction to staff or what, but please help me figure out how we can, uh, make people abide by what they're supposed to do when they get funds that they're supposed to use to help people. All I got for you.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
I can't believe you guys let me do this. I hope everyone's looking forward to a happy Easter. I hope you get to watch a bunch of kids try to find Easter eggs, and I hope you get to, um, be, have fellowship with those you love. Happy Easter, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Carbone?
Thank you, Chair. And there was a couple of things that was discussed earlier, and one of them had to do with, uh, don't feed the animals, I mean, the horses, livestock, whatever you want to call them out there. Obviously, there were signs that were supposedly up, but I don't recall anything about fees for penalties listed on any of those signs, because I don't believe we have a, any documentation that the counties put out that said it's gonna be X amount of dollars if you get caught. So if there's something out there, I'd sure like to know what it is. And if not, maybe we need to put something out there that does that.
I, I don't believe there were any monetary penalties put on the signs. I'm not sure if it would have made a difference. I think they would have been stolen regardless, but if that's the direction of the board, we can definitely make that as part of our signage.
I think that was some of the requests, I think, I heard from the board earlier, so I just figured I'd comment on it and go from there. It's kind of, kind of crazy. Yeah, my other comment is that, uh, it's been a perplexing board today and a couple items. I, I think that Commissioner Strickland brought some really good items to talk about. It's unfortunate that some of us didn't see our way through it, but I think the outcome still, was still, was met and was asked for. It was a good meeting. I wish we could have got it done a little bit quicker, but this is a lot quicker than it's been, so. Uh, yes, I know, you can't go for an item that only had two items on it and say, "We really hit it hard." Okay, so. Can't say a success.
I hear, I hear Commissioner Strickland, even, even without her microphone being on.
So, again, great meeting. Everybody had some good comments. A little long on the tooth in a few of them, but I think it was well worth to hear everybody's comments. Um, I understand that there's a few people in the, in the public that's probably not happy with this, but we only get a certain amount of time to read the backup as well. Uh, we're just as versed as you are when we see these items. We have to go find out more detail each time we get this book of pleasure that we have to work with. So it's not just, uh, we have people coming to our office and brief us on everything that's in here. We have to go out and get that information and understand what it is. So if you feel that you, you didn't have enough time to review five pages, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'm not sure if Deputy DA Marilla Slowtek is on the phone, but I know we've had the pleasure of having Deputy DA Michelle Nelson here with us in Perump. And, um, I would be remiss if I didn't remind you all to protect your family and friends, conserve your water, stay in new to your pets. Wishing you all a happy Easter, happy upcoming Passover, and happy upcoming Pasca season. And, uh, before I turn it over to Manager Comments, Commissioner Carbone remembered one more thing.
Yeah, I just, I just can't wait to see what shows up on Ian Bean's webpage next.
You actually read that? Don't even bother. Don't even bother.
Actually, you have.
I'll read it, it gets read to me.
You listen to it, yeah.
Yes. Any managers wishing to, managers and directors, elected officials wishing to speak?
Yes.
No, did we?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to address something that Commissioner Carbone brought up in regards to the signs for feeding the horses or animals. I don't know where that came from, but I don't think we have anything like Entitled 6 or Title 17 that says you can't feed wild animals, because we've never really been tasked with that before. The only times I've seen those signs that have any teeth in them maybe is out in Red Rock about do not feed the burrows, because there is a $500 fine, but that is like through the state. It, you know, it doesn't have anything really to do with us. So if we want to pursue, pursue something like that, then I guess we have to make a few changes in our own laws, because we don't have those laws. And I don't really think we can do anything about what people do on their own property if we don't have a law that says they can't. So if the horse goes on their property and eats their grass, um, what are we gonna do about it? We can't very well arrest the horse, um, and we can't arrest the people because the horse went in their ditty thing. So maybe the signs are, um, not really needed anyway, since they don't really apply. But, um, I don't think that they're hurting anything other than maybe they're happy. Thank you, that was all I wanted to say was comment on, maybe we should look at that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Again, any managers wishing to speak, public comment?
I don't have anybody here in Perump.
Okay. Well, seeing and hearing none, I will close, uh, Commissioner Manager Comments, and we will adjourn at 3:37. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff.